Let the leaders flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh yeah, Belinda said she wasn't there.
She's out, yeah.
Somebody wanna volunteer to do the roll call and take, sign the minutes for today? How do we do that?
We don't have any minutes.
We're not getting any.
They weren't ready.
Well, how about signing the minutes for tonight when they're published?
She can skip it.
She can, okay. So, I'll, I'll, I'll do the roll call. Joe?
Here.
David?
Here.
Bill's here. Sam?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Ron?
Here.
Okay, we're all set. Uh, next item is the agenda. Uh, any changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
It's court.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed. Well, I'll go through the motions. Public comments for items not on the agenda. I guess I'll keep my little introduction short 'cause there's nobody here. But, is there anybody online? No?
I've got answers, but it happens when someone, not if you can dial in, um, that's new to me. Do you, do you take questions?
Yeah, we do. But, you know, Brian monitors it and there's nobody on.
Okay.
So, I guess to be official, I will open, uh, the, uh, agenda item for public comments for items not on the agenda at six oh two. Any comments? There's nobody here? All right, I will close the, uh, public comments section. Next item, public hearing, non-regular business, tree ordinance discussion. I guess what I, I thought I would do is, I think I, imagine everybody read what was sent out and, and the introduction I wrote up, how we got to where we are. I guess I'd just do a brief summary of what I wrote up and then what Jerry wrote up. The one I wrote up applies to any land which comes before the planning commission for site plan approval. It defines protected trees as any trees over six inches DBH, or I also added twenty foot for conifers. I ran across that. I didn't see that commonly done in ordinances, but I ran across it and it occurred to me, why not? But, you know, it's all open for discussion if we get into fine tuning this. It defines landmark trees. It defines woodlands as a small cluster of trees and forested woodlands as a woodland that's over three acres. It defines preserved trees as any protected tree specified as remaining or being left. I just felt it was clear to distinguish between preser- uh, protected trees and then protected trees which are designated as being preserved. It set a priority for preservation, landmark trees, woodlands and forested woodlands, and then the perimeter. And again, this is, these were all thrown out as starting points, so everything's open for discussion. It, mine encourages tree removal to be limited to the areas of site improvements like buildings, roads, easements. It allows basically fifty percent of tr- protected trees to be removed. It calls for a replacement plan for any protected trees removed in excess of fifty percent. It proposes that the permits get issued by the building official only after final site plan approval with a small minor exception for a few trees needed to do preliminary investigative work. And it provides for various methods and guidelines for protecting of preserved trees. That's basically what mine does, put in simple terms. Does anybody have any questions on, on mine? Everybody understand it and feel comfortable with it? Okay. Jerry's, just again to summarize it, calls for the establishment of one or, I guess, possibly several overlay districts within the township. The restrictions for cutting down of trees would only apply to trees that are within the defined overlay district. And, um, even though, as some say, we are built out, there is a potential for anyone to compile multiple parcels into a larger one and develop it, and it could therefore be missed. It, it, his proposal does allow for the addition, two additions and amendments to the overlay districts, but I have some questions on the mechanics and timing of that. It places a burden on the township in that we need, would need a township forester and the township would be burdened with having to prepare these overlay districts, includes, including an inventory of them, aerial photography and, and then maintaining that inventory. And on top of that, I have, I have many other, um, smaller technical issues which we can get into if, if we need to. So, um, with that, what do you guys think?
I'd like to throw out a third option.
Yeah.
Brian, we talked about possibly having it just be, um, you know, somehow tying it to the site plan, um, regulations as a cleaner, quicker way of doing it. I think I wanna start with, since I, a lot of, I put a lot of, you know, I instigated some of the urgency for this, or tried to at least earlier on, is that in my opinion, what I was, what I, what I think that we should try to do, you know, our main goal was to protect undeveloped property from being cleared until we determine what is significant on the property, as the, the most common way of putting it, you know, as it pertains to site plans. So, the concern is, is that if we don't know what buffering we want, what the use is gonna be, or if during, in the greenways plan, if a tree row or a certain amount of trees is out, is been designated for animal movements in the community, which we have done, it's, you know, it's a problem if they go and clear everything before we get to negotiate what's significant on the property. It doesn't mean that they get less use of their land because I would be in favor of giving them, um, you know, other concessions if need be to, to establish, you know, to, to retain the buffering and the tree rows that we find significant. If it's already cleared, we don't have that ability to find it significant, you know? So, or to, or to, to allocate it. So, I just wanna fi- you know, I think a fifty-seven page document is just, and I didn't even read it 'cause I don't want a fifty-seven page document, so, just, just to be clear. Okay? But, if there's something more than what I'm saying as the intent of what we're trying to do, which is why it's not relevant to residential homes, why it's not, uh, you know, I don't believe it's taking away people's rights, it's, it's giving the township the right to determine what's appropriate prior to them clearing the land. And I just wanna be in favor of whatever is the cleanest, simplest, quickest implemented way of achieving that goal. And then if the rest of the commission has other, you know, um, I'm not looking at it as from the tree preservation view, me personally, I'm looking at it as it from the, the buffering and, you know, and significant tree row preservation from that point. So, people may wanna take it further because they're, they wanna save significant sized trees or, or things like that, but I just, you know, make it clear that that's what my goal has been in getting to this point, is, is the ability to, uh, be able to, uh, control what happens before they clear cut, you know? So, I think Joe has something to say.
Well, just a question. How would you distinguish, well, first of all, simplicity is the, is the word of the day, you know, which we sort of forgot about in a couple of these versions here, at least one of them. So, I'm with you on as simple as it can be, and I think another overlay district or two doesn't add to the simplicity unless I'm unders- misunderstanding things, but, so, okay. How, how would you distinguish between undeveloped lands and residential property in terms of controlling the, the tree cutting?
Anything that requires a site plan. So, even an assemblage of property in residential is gonna require a site plan. Once you, if you're gonna put a bunch of properties together and do a neighborhood, you're gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna require a site plan. I think the, the, the two issues I would see with it is, no matter what we do, is getting the word out to the developers that this exists and there'll be a penalty if you clear cut it before you talk to us, you know, and that penalty is, pardon?
Before you present the site plan.
Yes, so that, like, right now, we don't want, you know, people have said, well, once you, uh, implement a wood or, a woodland ordinance, people are just gonna start clear cutting everything, you know, before it goes into effect, so they're not bound to it, you know? That's why a cleaner, quicker way tying it to a site plan with penalties, um, I think is, is once, you know, it could be one step, and then if we wanted to take it to a woodland ordinance preservation type thing, that's clearly a, a layer on top of the don't do anything yet plan, and then you could, you know, it could always get more and more complex.
Well, are you saying it gets more and more, we could add to it as years go by or as we're drafting?
As years go by. Or it's just time goes by, yes, I mean, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, um, Mr. Chair, Sam and I had talked about, you could probably do a lot in this to be effective if you moved a lot of the final site plan requirements to conceptual, like the tree inventory and things like that. If you move that to conceptual, it's highly unlikely they're gonna clear anything because they haven't gotten conceptual yet.
Landscape, landscape plan should be part of the beginning preliminary.
That's what I mean, you could, you could do that.
Tie it in with the landscape.
If you move it earlier in the process, okay, we go through our pre-app and then they come to the planning commission for conceptual, you already know what the tree inventory is, 'cause you see it right away, and that may impact things. That's another way, instead of the scary tree ordinance word, you know, that's been in this township for so long, that's a, a mechanism to do. I think Jerry's is, I mean, I, I love Jerry to death, but it's a non-starter. I don't know how the board would ever approve that, 'cause I think the last time we went down this road, it was about meeting a forester and all these things, you know, and somebody going out in the woods and inventorying trees all over, and that just seems too much.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. Basically, when we talked about this in November, you were making your checklist here and everything, I, I, I guess I voiced my opinion at that time, that I still think, you know, it's pretty much what Sam was getting at, that, uh, it's a site plan issue, you know, we need to, uh, to me, there's some things, we need to, there needs to be some checklist stuff that goes out, uh, like, you know, here's what you need for your site plan and planning, you know, to develop any property. And part of it is tree preservation or just, you know, vegetation preservation in general. Like I said, and I guess instead of, you know, maybe doing a, an inventory of every tree that's on your property, you know, we talked about, you know, if you got a cluster of trees, just say this canopy, you know, of trees or, you know, a stain or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, that, you know, we're talking about keeping it as simple as possible, you know, just, you know, get it to where it's documented what, what it is, and to me, the landscape plan, i- and typically what we look at landscape plan is after everything's already been cleared out, and now it's like, what are we putting back? And I guess what I'm getting at is like, what we need to do is to talk about landscape plan at the beginning, here's what it is, you know, here's, you know, it's kinda like the current situation and the future situation. That way they show the landscape plan of, you know, what the current is and what, what they plan to change with that. No different than you were doing with the building.
We did that with Monarch, is that we decided not to have them re-vegetate the buffer we had. We were able to get ahead of them and say, we don't, we want the natural fifty-foot buffer to stay untouched no matter what, and then saves them on the, on the re-vegetation, and it gave us a, a lot better, um, you know, a row of pine trees and fifty foot of brush and thicket and bushes and trees is a, there's the big difference between the two. One's not gonna die 'cause it's been there forever, and the other one's subject to die and takes time to mature, you know, so it's.
Monarch, they kept several clumps in the front that we pushed them on.
Right.
Megan, you want to say?
Just to add to that, what I didn't see in any, either of the proposed tree ordinances then was allowance of those preserved trees to count towards their required landscaping, whether it be the buffering or whether it be the, whether it be the street trees or whatnot. I've seen multiple ordinances where they've said a preserved tree counts one to one for your required landscaping, and then that is actually an incentive to the developer to not clear and then to use that as a design parameter going forward and look at it critically. The other thing I think that you all were talking about is having a conceptual, uh, natural features or woodlands or tree survey, um, for you to look at, but again, also what I found is when landscape architects look at that or a civil engineer looks at that, if they know that the township wants those preserved, they'll design around it or in concert within the natural features, and that's what you want. And I think that could be more strongly articulated in what, in either of these, i- in both of these, in whatever version you decide to go forward with.
My concern, I debated that in putting mine together, should it be conceptual or final, and my concern with making it conceptual was, so they give you their, their tree inventory and all that stuff and, and they get a permit and they go start cutting down trees, and you never get final.
No, they don't get conceptual, they have to bring it at conceptual, you look at it at conceptual, they don't get permission to, to clear anything until they get final site plan.
Okay, okay.
The penalty is what's gonna be important, because if it's insignificant.
They'll just do it anyway.
Or if it's a one-to-one, like if we, so, the penalty I think is that if we catch you cutting trees down, ignorance of the law or not is irrelevant, you would have to, you know, re-vegetate, you know, at a one-to-one rate of everything over, so, you know, say like a, you know, two or three inch caliber tree, well, that could be astronomical to them, you know what I mean? 'Cause it's gotta be something significant and something we could, you're gonna get caught clearing a big, you know, a piece of commercial property before it's a hun- before all the stumps are gone. Somebody's gonna be able to tell, either if it's from an area, you know, a way of knowing what the penalty would be, and I think it needs to be strong enough to be a deterrent, you know?
So, if I'm hearing you right, you wanna start off with just a basic requirement that at conceptual, they have to, um, submit their tree inventory, and, um, we review that, and do we determine, do we determine at that point what trees they can and can't cut down, or, or are you proposing we build into that same ordinance some language, um, that controls what they can and can't?
I think that our, our, our decision of, of how the site plan can evolve from conceptual to final will take care of itself on what trees we wanna, you know, preserve as we work through the, the process from conceptual to final.
I think part of, you know, our, our requirements for a site plan needs to have this, this checklist of instructions, like, hey, you need to try and preserve, you know, the trees, you, you know?
Right.
All, all the things we talked about, you know, these checklists, those things need to be in there, like, hey, when you do yours, your, uh, landscape plan, it has to, you know, has to include these things and these steps.
The good thing now is that we're getting even farther ahead of it with the pre, pre-conceptual plan meeting, so, and even one step closer to that, when they contact the planning department and Brian says, hey, just FYI, here's what's new, you know, here's what we're doing, then it's like, okay, you know, two weeks from Tuesday, we're gonna meet with everyone and then we're gonna reiterate what that means, and then if they wanna move forward with the project, um, then they'll come through with the conceptual plan, and by then, they would already know what we're thinking, just like we did with these last few projects, they'll know, you know, what direction we're going, you know, 'cause, uh, David, you're just starting here with us, but we, we, you know, with this new plan, we're really, we've had a lot of petitioners who've gotten farther down the road than it was fair to them to get, spending money, before we got to give them some guidance on what kinda roadblocks and what the expectations of the township were. So now, before they even start drawing anything, there's a dozen of us that meet with them, the fire department, the building department, all of us, and, you know, and say, you know...
I was, I was gonna ask, if I can, I was, I was gonna ask what drove some of this. I mean, it's kinda easy to pull in as I was reading through it, that it looks like there's been some bad experiences, right? Even way back when I was in the planning commission, decades ago, you would have, you know, developers do some not-so-nice things to get the headache of, of folks in the area. I can remember a couple, like golf courses where, you know, a citizen showed up and said, hey, we really love the trees, you know, and I remember one guy just bulldozing a bunch of trees, like, I'm not going into another meeting, and he came in, he's like, yeah, trees are all gone, and the problems, problems evaporated. So, I kinda get that this is based on some bad experience where we've had people, and they, the intent, which I thought was really good, by the way, upfront, to say why we're doing this, what's the strategy here, is to prevent kinda the uncontrolled, unnecessary removal of the, of the trees. But, let me just ask some practical questions, 'cause I, I kinda agree with, simpler's better, you don't wanna tie your hands too much, and I'm really not a fan of putting a lot of rules in place, just generally that people can kinda game, well, there's one-for-one, so we did this, I mean, the, the, the objective is to have something that retains a lot of, of the natural resources, the trees, and you don't, a lot of tactical things get in the way of that when you're working with someone. But, let me just ask, if I've got, let's say I'm a, an owner of a large piece of property, I put together, you know, twenty or thirty acres, I got plans for this, and typically it would be a conceptual, you'd probably trigger this, right? I'd come in with conceptual, then I'd be kinda be made aware of what, you know, the inventory that would be required. If words out that, hey, the township can, you know, make you retain a lot of stuff and you really wanted to clear it off, what prevents someone from just doing that before they even start that process? Like, I got a lot of trees on this property, I'm not gonna even get into this, I'm gonna clear them before I even do conceptual, 'cause I've seen other people go in. I'm asking from a practical standpoint, and then they come in like, you can, I can replace one-for-one, but he's already, he or she's already gotten rid of, you know, a hundred trees.
The draft I have has a, I call it five-year look-back provision.
So...
If I can find it, I can beat it.
The reason I ask that is 'cause it's very clear that this doesn't affect residential, you know, this is meant for things coming in.
Not single family.
But you never know, if someone's like, I don't know what I'm gonna do yet, but if in a few years I wanna do this, I'm gonna get these trees out of the way. That's what I don't, I, I don't see this preventing that, right?
Um, so...
And someone's like, I, I wasn't planning two years ago to do this. I cut all the trees down, now I wanna do a site plan.
Um, based on experiences at, at our firm, um, and specifically City of Troy has a, a five-year window where they look back, and based on aerials, and so if something comes in for conceptual site plan and you look back five years and there were a significant amount of trees on aerials or whatnot, then what it says is that the ci- in that case, the city can assess a penalty for those trees being taken down retroactively, and that's held up.
So, the incentive would be wait the five years?
The incentive would...
By the way, I'm trying, I'm trying to pull myself with the position of this devilish guy, but I was like, okay, if I had a lot of trees and I wanted them gone, I'm gonna forest them out.
And then, you know, I've also seen where somebody took down trees and claimed it was right to farm. Um, and so...
Or they were diseased, they had to go.
Right. And, and there also are gonna be cases, so, what, in whatever you have, there should be provisions for exemptions for diseased trees.
In mine.
Yeah, and, and both, and, and, um, invasive species, and mine base, on the invasive species list is not to put a list in the ordinance because that gets out of date quick. Based on the lands, talking to the landscape architect in our office, he really suggests either having a tree board, and that in this case could be the, um, residential open space committee, or there might be another entity where they keep and update a list of invasive species every year because they change, um, or you might have trees like that have a pest that comes in, like the emerald ash borer, and so now you, you don't want that tree around anymore, it's a vulnerable tree, um, or link it to something that is a state, um, a state list, um, because again, it's hard to change zoning ordinance.
Right.
I think those caveats aren't gonna be that hard to throw in there, though, right?
No, 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 but it's just when you get down to the details of those, to have those, and then I would also ask you to think about, do you have some hard and fast rules in here? Like, if you want people to protect landmark trees, call them out and say that they should be protected, if not, we're gonna replace them on this, we're gonna ask you to replace them on this and such a, this and such a ratio. Because if you don't give the developers those rules to begin with, they're not gonna design around it.
Right.
'Cause you want them to design either around the natural features or with the natural features.
Let me ask you a question. So, what's the, what would be, if the planning commission wants to move forward with the recommendation of a tree ordinance like Bill's talking about, is there any issue with that moving in, um, uh, in sequence with the, the site plan standards being addressed immediately the, the site plan standards being addressed immediately and then that backing it up? Because we can do one a lot quicker than we can do the other.
Yeah, no, I think you.
You know? And, and it wouldn't hurt to have, it's, they would play out the same, right? So you'd have the basic guidelines and then a more specific ordinance that would follow it.
Could you do the lookback with, of a ordinance though? Cause that sounds like it's more.
Well, what I'm talking about with Brian would be procedural, like the process is if you come to the township, you can't clear the land, you can't clear the lot without a site plan.
I was gonna go back to the five-year lookback, though. If you don't have the ordinance in place, like, okay, well, I didn't know until I got here and I, I cleared it twenty-four months ago. So it sounds like that ordinance would have more bite for that five-year lookback, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And then I've got a technical question. Were you all, was the planning commission envisioning this as, cause when I, when I look at, when I looked at the two examples in the packet, it said zoning ordinance, tree and woodlands preservation. So I took that as this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance and it's gonna be part of the zoning ordinance. It might be a new section, it might be a new article, but it's gonna be part of the zoning ordinance. Is that what you meant? Or did you mean that it would be a standalone ordinance?
What can't just be a site plan requirement?
In the environmental section of the code.
What can't just be a site plan requirement instead of being an ordinance?
Which is the most effective way?
To answer your question, I don't.
How does it play out for both?
I don't care.
What's easiest?
As long as it gets done.
If it's only for things for a site plan, then there's no reason to have it outside the zoning ordinance. The only reason to have something outside the zoning ordinance is if you were gonna have a permit, um, that could be, that you wanted to easily revoke, um, cause it's very hard to revoke a, a permit under the zoning ordinance. Or if you didn't want something that is subject to the zoning board of appeals as a dimensional variance. Um, so, but what I have, in dealing with a lot of zoning ordinances that have these types of provisions within the zoning ordinance where there's tree preservation as part of the landscaping and the site plan, um, I have yet to see one appeal to the zoning board of appeals because usually what's in there also is in the landscaping is that the planning commission has some leeway at the table to grant relief and there's some negotiations. So you don't really ever get to a point where someone's so upset about what's expected about the tree is that they're going to go get a, they apply for a variance. So to, I made a long answer. Um, it probably would be most effective within the zoning ordinance. And I think also with the emphasis on personal property rights in your township too, that putting it in the zoning ordinance and in that way, it's much more explicit that it's only for a site plan or PUDs.
But that wouldn't hinder us from immediately changing the requirements of a site plan to make it where you can't clear the lot without penalty? Or would that, right?
Well, Sam, you keep coming back to that, isn't it?
Yeah, because that's the, that's the quick, that's the swipe of the pen way to do it.
But can you still keep it as a site plan requirement and put some of those guidelines around it as to, uh, providing guidance to the applicant as well as, um, flexibility for the planning commission to, um, have some, some control over what does and doesn't get cut? Does that question make sense?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I'm not in favor, just to be perfectly clear, personally, I'm not in favor. I would prefer not to have an ordinance that says you need to submit a tree survey before you can get site plan approval. Put it simply, okay? I know it's a lot more. I'm not in favor of just doing that. I want more to it than that.
Oh, oh yeah, no, no. So what, I think what would be proposed is that, is that a conceptual site plan, you have to have a tree survey and you have to have a conceptual landscape plan. And in that, you have to show us which trees you're proposing to remove, which trees you're proposing to preserve, and of those trees, what's their health and size? Um, and species. And some of them might get thrown out of the mix because they're a box elder or invasive species, et cetera. And then you have some rules which say anything over eight inches in caliber. Or the other proposal in your ordinances was no more, at least fifty percent of the trees on site need to be preserved. And if you don't abide by that rule, there's a penalty for it, i.e. you have to do some form of tree replacement. And then also in those rules, what I was suggesting is that if they are going to preserve trees, so let's say they're gonna preserve a twenty-four inch tree, well, that can count for three landscaping trees, inch, inch, so three eight-inch.
At discretion of the planning commission, yes.
You could have that, you could have that at the discretion.
Cause the placement would matter. You know, if you say three huge oak trees in the back of a ten-acre parcel and you do no landscaping in the front, that's not gonna be an option.
Right, yeah. And they could be in the same, yes.
Like you say, I think we still need to maintain some kind of minimum front, you know, like, like you're saying, that's what I was worried about. It's like, all the vegetation means one spot, but it's all bare over here. Like, I, I think our ordinance right now says you have to have so many in the front.
Right.
And that, and that type of thing, right?
I don't think there's any ro- problem with us being strict. We're super lenient. I mean, I, in West Bloomfield, I got one customer paying over fifty thousand for trees from a canopy picture from nineteen ninety-six.
Maybe.
That's in the bill of a circular driveway. So there's a lot of woodland preservation. What we're proposing is not even as much about the, you know, the overall preservation as to us controlling, uh, us controlling and encouraging it, um, before we don't have the option to.
Like, right now, we don't have anything in our system to say, don't cut down the trees.
Right.
And that, that's what we need, we just need to promote that, that, you know, we want you to save as many trees as possible.
I'm not necessarily saying, Bill, and my, my, what I'm saying isn't in lieu of what you're saying. It's, I'm saying what we, I think we should try to, we should try, we can quickly, more quickly implement it that with Brian while we're dialing in the, the, or, you know, an ordinance if the planning commission wants to move forward with one with details. But, but the policy and procedure part, I think is, is, I think should be step one. You know, identifying that it's a requirement and we're working on it and, and then Brian having direction to tell everyone when we go to the pre-con meetings, what the new procedure is. What, what, just real quick, what does it require? Is it a directive from the supervisor? Is it something from the planning? What, what, what chain, what is the, the least a thing we have to do to implement a new policy?
For requirements for a site plan review?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's a zoning.
It's a list that's in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so, but that's what, you make a list and it goes, we recommend the board adopt it and it goes, it gets two readings?
Yeah, it's a typical zoning ordinance. So it's like, like what we were talking about in our, in my office, like where we move some things from final up to preliminary.
That's still zoning?
Yeah, it's in the zoning ordinance. All those requirements are in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, and I think it would also with that, you could move forward with that, some of the tree preservation measures during construction that Sheriff Scarborough had in his version. I don't think anybody's gonna.
And that would be in a different section, right?
Yeah.
Um, than it would be of implementing a tr- uh, wo- uh, woodland ordinance. So it's an amendment to the site plan thing, but then it's the creation of a separate ordinance that would follow. Is that, is that correct?
It's kind of a hybrid between the two, a mixture of two.
Let me say this, I, I'm all for making it simpler. I realize this one came out a lot longer than I anticipated, but I figured, well, let's get it on the table and we can whittle it down. But I'm also a big believer, if you're gonna take the time to go through an ordinance and have public hearings and do all that stuff, you might as well do it right and be done with it rather than doing a little bit now, a little bit more a year, and a little bit more a year later. Um, recognizing that things change and sometimes you realize you missed some things when you wrote an ordinance or you made a mistake and you have to amend it. But I'm a fir- firm believer of putting the effort in to get it done and be done with it. Um, I think to some extent staging it can end up being inefficient and a delay. Joe?
The, uh, my, just a couple things. I'm all so far in favor of just about everything I've heard. Okay, but the thing is, um, I am absolutely in favor of moving forward soon with getting something done. And I don't know what the something exactly is. I know Ron's talked a little bit about, you know, we can get this done, that done, Sam wants to do something immediately. You know, I don't know how things are broken down in order to, um, amend the zoning ordinance to accomplish what we want. I mean, I don't know how that works exactly. But I certainly would be in favor of getting something started. Now, I agree with Bill, we don't wanna, you know, be amending this thing every six months for the next four years because we didn't take enough time to do it right at the beginning. However, that's gotta be compensated with or averaged out with. We can't sit around for two years waiting for something to happen either. We've gotta get something going and I don't know what the something is right now.
So is there, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, and I got, one last thing is, uh, on another subject, is tying this, which I agree with, to the site plan review process, you know, conceptual, final, et cetera, et cetera. Will that, um, miss any trees in the township that we wanna control? Because it's not gonna go through the site plan process. Does that make any sense at all? I mean.
So I had, I had like a, a, an adjacent question, I guess. One thing that was important to me as I read this, and I thought this was great, by the way.
Thank you.
One, one thing that I thought, I wanted to make sure that we didn't, it's very clear in here that we're talking about development and site plans, right? We start getting into, I was more concerned about residential property and people being hamstrung and people turning up. And I, and I know a lot of people that, I don't want you to tell me what to do. A tree fell down, I gotta go cut it down and I don't need to be coming in for permission. So I'm more worried that we, we reached too far over. But I, I get your point. Is there anything else that we miss if they don't go through the site plan?
Right, right. I'm not suggesting anything because I'm not the expert here. But, you know, if we're going through all this, are we, if we tie it only to the site plan, are we missing some group of trees that we want?
Are there any, um, there are cer- I'll ask it a different way. There's certain construction projects that can happen in a municipality that don't have to go through site plan approval, like a school or like a government building. Um, I don't know, are there?
Sure.
School, yeah.
School.
They are, right now.
Yeah.
So, could this apply to a school?
No.
Okay.
No, even if you had a tree ordinance, it wouldn't apply to a school.
Okay.
They're exempt from local regulations.
Out of luck, we're out of luck.
And then utilities too.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question. So if we were gonna do the two different things, it sounds like you need to do both, not one. Need to do the procedural part of the site plan along with a woodland ordinance, if that's what's happening. Either way, they're both getting amended. What, you know, that's why, see, I don't care if, if, if every meeting at the township board were making a mo- first motion, second motion or amendment thing because it's, it's just getting done. I, I don't wanna spend six months fooling around with, you know, the tree ordinance while we haven't immediately, as quick as possible in the next sixty days or so, changed the procedural process. That's what I'm worried about when you try to bite off two things. And if they both need to be done, they should be able to move in unison and whatever's done first goes, goes up, you know, goes up to the board. And then the other one, if it follows a month later, it follows a month later, you know? Because what I'm worried about is that we already had a kinda, do a little bit of pushing to get two meetings a month so we could have these meetings to get some housekeeping done. And if we go back to one meeting a month, it could be the, it could be the end of the year before we chip through a, a six, fifty-page document, you know, to get it dialed in. And that's, so, I think we can move them both at the side, we should try to move them both at the same time in unison. And if one's done sooner, the, the process, um, it's just, you know, all it's gonna take is one more guy coming in here and clear-cutting a big thing and going, man, I wish we would've had this done a month ago. You know, while we're fooling around with caliper decisions and this and that, you know?
Right.
Yeah, if it's the consensus of, what Sam's talking is, the consensus of the commission right now, I mean, we can, Megan's got a pretty good idea of this kinda hybrid approach of both. And, you know, where we do the standards and we also do something behind that. I, I, I mean, we might as well have her drafted.
Well, you, I just gotta cover some past territory. We tried that approach once and.
Well, supervisor's giving me authority to.
He has, okay.
Different supervisor.
Okay.
Ron's got a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess just talking about it, to me, I think if we keep attacking the site plan methodology and just come up with some wording, I think we, you start talking about woodland ordinance, to me, that's where you're gonna get bogged down, it's gonna take forever. To me, if we just keep the site plan simple, like, we don't want you to cut down more than fifty percent of the trees and, uh, we want you to preserve, uh, any tree over, and I guess the words like, uh, uh, legacy trees, you know, you know, uh, those types of things, let's just, you know, come up with a thing, like, any tree over eighteen inch diameter or something like that, you know, you need to have justification why you wanna cut this tree down. And, cause, you know, you, I looked in the back of Jerry's thing, there was the whole list of every tree and what diameter and all that type of stuff. To me, if you look at their eighteen inches, it was like seventy percent of the, of the total. So it's kinda like the eighty-twenty rule. So, I mean, let's just say, you know, the, 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 the long-term trees that you wanna save or justify is like, anything over eighteen inches, that has to be, uh, talked about on the site plan. You know, why you're removing it, what, what just, you know, what remedy you're gonna.
I think what you're talking about, Ron, though, is the, is the ordinance part of the second, phase two of it. Because I wouldn't be in favor of the, the procedural part being you got, you gotta leave fifty percent of the trees. It's gotta be, you can't clear any trees until you get, till you get to the conceptual at least or the final. Then those restrictions.
Yeah, I was just talking about fifty percent of what's gotta, you gotta keep that.
Right.
I, I was just kinda talking about, just coming up with the checklist of things and trying to keep it as simple. And just like I say, just on the, on the big trees, instead of saying all the different types and everything, let's pick a, like a diameter and say, anything over eighteen inches has to be talked about while you're cutting that tree down or something like that.
A lot of tree preservation regulations do that. They do, they, uh, they do eighteen inches or greater. It's just that some trees based on different species.
All right, don't get that big.
Don't, don't get that big and so they might be smaller. But, um, again, I've seen plenty of that.
Got the golden tree coming up there.
They do that down in Florida and all sorts of places, the legendary trees. I guess, Bill, I would ask you is, you know, what, what do you think about, since we have this meeting tonight, you know, getting a checklist of things that we would have to do for the procedural and getting some sort of a consensus on that for Megan? And then, um, and then the, the ordinance thing, you know, we'll go, go through it and get a consensus on what, what things we think are reasonable and not in that, so that we're talking about them as separate items so that we can get closer to the finish line with, with our input, you know?
Megan, you've got, Brian said you've got a pretty good idea of what we're looking for.
Let me, let me repeat back what I, what my understanding is. So on the procedural side is that first off, there, um, and we're kind of, we're not necessarily working through where it would be in the ordinance, we're gonna work through time, all right? So, somebody has a piece of land right now. Assume the, be a provision that if they come in for conceptual site plan and we look back and see that they cleared a significant amount of trees in the past three, past, within the past five years, they're just quote-unquote on the hook for those. So, and there'll be some penalty that they have to pay as part of the site plan, um, for that action. That's one. Two, when they come in for conceptual site plan, they have to have, uh, tree inventory. There'll be regulations of what that tree inventory consists of, um, so that it can be checked off to make sure that it's complete. In that, they would show woodlands as have been defined, trees eight inches or whatever D V H we decide to preserve or higher, their species, their health, and then landmark trees and, and woodlands as defined. And they have to bring that forward. And in that, they also have to say, in concept, what they would preserve and what they were proposing to remove, and then how that works in. And then, but also a change would be they would need to bring a conceptual landscape plan that incorporates that tree preservation or removal. As part of that, then part of the rules would be in the tree preservation part of the zoning ordinance that the whole intent that is here, um, that's been crafted.
But simplified.
Simplified, um, to say. Simplified, to say that we don't want, there, there would be a penalty for removal of, of a forest, of a woodland, and that's higher than just simply removal of a tree on its own. That's the highest one for in terms of a penalty. Then a landmark tree comes next, there's a higher penalty or removal or, or replacement ratio. And then that smallest tree that you're looking to preserve, whether it's six inches or, or eight inches in diameter or whatever, if, if we do a height that's different for evergreen trees, then that's the lowest one. All of those, then there would be something in there to say, also, if you preserve trees, those can count towards your landscaping if the planning commission approves it. And give them some.
Incentive.
Incentive to do that. And then, then you would have to have, add this into standards for conceptual site plan review, standards for preliminary site plan review or final stand plan, plan review. And then you would need to also then have a lot of the, the items that you have in here about preservations of trees during construction. I think probably requiring an inspection of those, the fencing and whatnot.
We already do that.
You already do that, okay. And then a penalty, if you don't do what you said you were gonna do during construction, you kill trees anyway, we're, we're gonna have a, have a penalty. Does that sum up what you've talked about?
Yes, I know.
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, I just did one of the get these, as we're kinda tabulating everything that goes on. First of all, nice job, and I wanna see you do that without looking back at the recording tour, where he said, but I, I still feel that this lookback period feels incredibly complicated to me. If someone comes in and says, yeah, neighbor reported they removed, unless you, you have a forest and you remove it all, neighbor said you removed twenty trees, and the person just says, yeah, they were dead. I, I just see there's, there's a lot of, unless you're taking aerial shots of the township on a regular basis, it's gonna be hard. If other communities do it today, I'll yield and say they must've figured it out, but it seems like it's a hard task. But that's just, how we enforce that, I'm trying to make this as uncomplicated as possible going forward. And there's a lot of complications in the way you laid out this tree and that tree. And if you're not, if you're not actually doing those assessments five years before, it seems a little difficult.
It does seem, it is difficult. We, like, for instance, we subscribe to a service called the Near Map.
Yeah.
And they have updated photos early once a quarter. It's actually sometimes a little spooky, but we use that in Ann Arbor Township exactly for this item.
Yeah, it's like you're running to like, there were some dead trees and we took them out, and, you know, sometimes you can't tell, yeah, you had to see them. The question, the other questions I had were, rather than mitigation, if we go through this and there's all these circumstances where maybe there's some wetland, there's a lot of trees there, they die a lot, they die frequently in the, in the landowner's site. Yeah, they're out there, but maybe they're, maybe they're, they're legacy trees, but they don't last very long. Have we, and maybe this is just a thing to think about, would we consider off-site mitigation for some of these issues, right? So, way back when we had a wetland board, sometimes we'd have a small wetland on these property and we'd have to have the person mitigate it, and the worst thing you could do is try to build another wetland on that piece of property. You, you don't build it to a contiguous one. So, is it, does this give us some leeway, or could we build in some leeway that maybe we retain those trees or, or get new ones somewhere else where they'll do, do better, either on township property or something? I just throw that out as an idea, cause it might be in our best interest to allow, you know, kinda some off-site mitigation for some of this as we, as we go through.
I think we already have that, don't we? Over there.
This just was read so much like it was all contained in the piece, I just wanna make sure.
If it was existing ordinance, doesn't, don't we have an off-site place where people can plant trees and all this?
No.
Or lakes?
I, I think.
Woodlands are different.
Along, during the discussions of this, I think there's always been discussion of a quote-unquote tree bank where somebody could pay in and like.
They get safety paths, same way. I don't need one here, I'll pay, I'll pay into the fund.
I'll pay for the fund for elsewhere, or I'll plant off, off-site. And typically, the way it goes with this is that first they plant on-site, they can't plant on-site. Second thing is prefer to, is to plant off-site. Last resort is you pay into a tree fund.
Okay.
And I think I remember you saying, you're not necessarily in favor of the monetary tree foundation.
Again, I think that's a last resort, because there might be a time where it, you, you don't, you don't have someplace where you're looking for trees or, I mean, you have a lot of parks that you control, so.
But I like your approach. You wanna do it this way, but it's like, this makes no sense to try, and we got twenty of them over here, they're gonna die anyway. Let's put them into a tree bank, cause it doesn't make sense to keep them here, then. You don't want a developer coming and just putting that on the table.
We, we can convert that to landscaping though, too.
You could.
Cause I mean, we're talking about commercial property, not residential property. So.
Subdivision.
Well, but that's still, I consider a subdivision a commercial project, you know? So it's still, it'd be very, I couldn't, you know, I agree that there could be a caveat, but I find it very unlikely that we wouldn't vegetate on a, re-vegetate a commercial property with, or find, if we don't have room to re-vegetate a commercial property, it's too dense of a commercial property. The whole point of this is, is to not have so much impervious surface that there's no vegetation, you know, so.
Well, what we do.
But I mean, yeah, there could be the odd, odd thing.
I've also seen where they allowed substitution of bushes or other landscaping for it, so we could write that in. And then I, I would be, I would say leave those two safety valves, but they're at the discretion of the planning commission.
That's what I was getting at, is planning commission, you know, levers and tools to use. And then just one last question on this, and that was, once a sub is built out, picture a residential subdivision, right? I know the one I'm in, it had a fair amount of trees when we started, twenty years ago, when I moved in. Not so much anymore. Probably a hundred trees have died, neighbors take them down, the homeowners association, you know, they're, they're falling down, they cut them up. And I know nobody's asking permission for that. So, is this become a point-in-time thing of site plan approval, right? Where you go through all this work to retain the, the trees and the foliage and so on? And then as a sub builds out two years later, who's policing what happens in there so that there's a replacement? Some of them are, you know, they're all, in the site kind of world, it's all on common property. But is that what we're thinking? We're asking like, what are the strategies here that we continue to enforce?
Brian, there was, we've talked about that before, right?
Yeah, I mean, where we've had to control it through master deed and bylaws. I know in my subdivision, I can't cut a tree down without permission.
Yeah, they tell it to fall out on their own sometimes.
David, we've had a lot of subdivisions where we're well aware that the land, they might've passed the planting stage, but we're not holding their bonds long enough, and we're not holding them to the fire long enough for the trees to, to be proven to be survivors. And that's something that.
So that's kind of a different, different side of the coin, right? We required things two years later they didn't take, right? Sashaw Road and median, like the, something happened there. But, you know, just in the natural course of things.
But we gave them money back, and then we're like, now we got nothing to hold against them.
Of ash trees, and they all went, right? So it was, nobody was holding onto the, so I'm just trying to get a sense of what the commission's feeling is. Are we, are we trying to police going forward, or is it just for the site plan and the, the initial construction until the bond runs out? And then eventually, you know, it's kind of on its own?
I guess it'd be my thought that we're trying to police it at the point it gets developed. And enforcement then afterwards is, is always a function of the, the building department. And we all know there's issues there, because it's, you've just gotta be on top of things.
I'm not minor, so I just want clarity in whatever we put in. So that what developers like, exactly what's my responsibility after fifty percent build out, I start, you know, getting out of this.
Can we do that? Can we extend, I mean, we were talking about that before, extending the.
Yeah.
The commitment, like, okay, so here's a prime example. We got a bunch of dilapidated buildings on Dixie Highway. The people own them, they're not trying aggressively to sell them, they've left, all the trees have died, and they're all in violation of the site plan. So how, you know, the agreement of the site plan, so how long are we able to enforce?
Yep.
The approved site plan requirements, or does it just sunset and then nothing matters anymore? And can we change that to be, you know, longevity?
So I, I, I would need to look, but I have seen in landscaping requirements and zoning ordinances or in tree preservation requirements and zoning ordinances that if the tree dies within a certain period of time, the, you know, the property owner can be forced to replace it.
Sure.
Then for commercial property, it's not, not necessarily neighborhoods or subdivisions, but for things on retail strips and whatnot, they can be held to that site plan just as a, as a.
Condition?
Yeah.
Forever, in perpetuity, right?
In, in perpetuity, so, and then it's the, it's not the purview of this board, but it'd be the purview of the township board.
Right.
Directing staff about how much effort you wanna put into that.
I just wanna be careful with things like that, because you wanna, you don't, you don't want it to be the subs up and all, all bets are off, go do what you want. But you also, I, I honestly, I just think I was, I would wanna be in a neighborhood where ten, fifteen years later, I still got the reach of, guys, everything's changed here, I planted new trees, and, and you're, you're holding them to, you know, that one tree over there, so I wanna be a little careful.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know that we regulate, as soon as the HOA takes over, then it's the HOA's.
That's kinda works, yeah.
No, but I wanna regulate the commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial, we need to put, we need to put the screws to them to stay in compliance.
Unless it's a whole brand new setup.
Say you got like Taco Bell.
I just wanna be clear. I just wanna be clear.
Trees or whatever, I'm not sure exactly what it was. There's these nice trees with a nice umbrella and everything. Well, they went and cut them all down and put in these bushes. I don't know if they're supposed to be trees or not, but they're a gay high, and they had nice flowers on them the first year. But half of them are all died out now, so it's like, but, you know, to me, if they're gonna change, there's still needs, you know, whether it's the site plan. I guess I'm not saying they can't change the tree, but if they're gonna change it, it has to be something that meets the organs. I guess, to me, is, I don't, I don't care if they change over their landscaping over time, but they, there has to be like a minimum number of trees or bushes or.
Stay in compliance.
Right, stay in compliance, right.
Megan, on the five-year lookback thing, is that more of a deterrence issue? In practice, you find it rare you have to actually use that?
Yes. And you're always gonna have your, your want, the few individuals who do not care for the rules, no matter how well you write them.
Well, we don't have a lot of commercial left, so we need to be real stringent about how we develop it, you know? Brian, do we have the protections in place for the preservate, you know, for the continual compliance of site plan now if we wanna start enforcing that?
Yes, and we're, we're about to bring to the board the property maintenance code update, which will allow.
That's where that's at, right?
Yes, and it'll allow us even more teeth to actually tear down buildings.
Because that's the problem we're having, is these abandoned buildings and they're, you know, they're just not in compliance in any way, shape, or form. The facades, the, the maintenance, the landscaping.
I guess, my heartache is like I go by the, the old big boy building, they had some nice bushes and trees in the front of that butcher area. But now we're cutting, we gotta get everything out and put the car wash in, and it's like, but right next door, why didn't we just transplant, you know, some of those bushes and trees into the property next door?
Cause he's not in compliance either.
Now, and we're holding money to get him to comply.
I'm just saying, you see stuff like that, it's like, there is vegetation, all of a sudden, now it's gone, the little bit we had is gone and.
Megan, what, do you need a resolution from the board to tell you to go ahead, or is it, you just got that understanding? What do you, so you, do you think you'll come back to us with a rough draft?
Yes.
In time-wise?
Um, month, give me a month.
Okay.
So what are we talking about for the whole thing or the procedure thing?
No, the whole thing, the whole thing. We'll, I'll give you the whole package. I mean, I think, I think it's, when I list it out, if everybody's good with that, I, I, I think that's, I can, I see it in my head and how to write it.
It seemed like it's gonna do what we, and we could do it quickly.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
But if you come back with this, we can work them as two separate things, so if the.
If we come back with this, you could split it up any way you want, because there'll probably be like six or seven different sections of the zoning ordinance proposed to be amended. And so then you can slice and dice that how you want.
So sliding the requirements up to conceptual, we could be like, that one is good to go at this meeting, and this other one's good to go, and this one, these other three, let's make some tweaks and bring it back at the next meeting and send, and follow up with that one.
Still, then you're getting down to multiple public hearings.
Yeah, no matter what, you're gonna have to have a public hearing, and then it has to go to the board for two readings.
Yeah, we could get it down to two.
Yeah.
If we had to.
Or maybe I'm brilliant and it'll be one.
There you go.
I'll count on that one.
It's kinda mega the one pager.
When we, if we do a public hearing, do the, do we have to do another public hearing at every, at every amendment to, to it? Or just the conceptual of, the concept of it?
If there's significant, it's a kind of a weasely word of significant changes that you've decided to make at that public hearing, then we would do another one.
So if we get a public hearing on the, you know, on, up in the beginning, and then we just have a couple of minor tweaks to it, we could, we could push it through.
That's what I was gonna, if we, if we, the checklist of what has to be in the site plan, whatever, to me, I don't think that needs to, all the detail doesn't need to be in the ordinance. You could just refer to the checklist or some type of stuff, that way if you wanna update that or detail it more or whatever, then it's not, it doesn't need to, maybe a full change again.
Does that work?
Yep.
My concern over, over public hearings is not the cost, it's the delay, it's the time. It's another month or two.
It's another month, and then when you, I'll encouple it from something else that's two more meetings with the board.
Again, the simpler we keep it right now, the earlier you get something in place. And then, like I say, you can always decide you wanna do something more detailed later.
Yeah, I'd like to think at the first draft of it that you're doing, we could get through the procedural part of, of, of.
Let's let her, let's let her do it and see what she brings back. Fair enough?
Agree.
Thanks. Ready to move on? Zoning realignment subcommittee update. Megan prepared some stuff and sent it out. I, I just, I wanna say a few words first. I'm not sure if there was a misunderstanding, Megan, but our subcommittee is looking at the entire Dixie Highway overlay, not just the north.
Okay.
We wanna address the whole thing. And I would just say, as previously said, there are a hundred, well, one of the first things you asked is, what are your concerns for this area? So these are mine. As previously said, there was over a hundred and twenty-two parcels of land that are zoned for use that is more intense than that which is indicated by the master plan. The majority of this land on the Dixie Highway district is master planned for either some category of office or local commercial. Local commercial is aligned with C one. The majority of the parcels which are zoned for a more intense use than what the master plan anticipates are zoned C three or higher. I believe, I'm not sure, but I believe the plan development option for the Dixie Highway overlay district was devised in part to address this issue. However, I believe it still leaves us vulnerable for being approached for a use that meets the underlying, underlying zoning, but not the master plan. For example, under C one, retail businesses not exceeding ten thousand square feet are allowed uses. Under C two and higher, such retail businesses not exceeding seventy-five thousand square feet are allowed. So an applicant could approach us for a seventy thousand square foot retail business in a C three zone property which is located in an area master planned for C one. If they meet all the non-discretionary ordinances, we would have to approve it. We have no P D O option that we can force that gives us more ability, unless I'm misunderstanding something, that gives us more ability to try and negotiate more mitigating factors. Yeah, we do contain a separate ordinance for the Dixie Highway overlays, overlay district, and section E of that gets into standards and requirements. However, I feel those standards and requirements are very general and not specific enough. For example, it states that development shall contribute to a coordinated development pattern which provides for a compatible transition. But it does not, it says nothing about what a compatible transition is. It talks about coordinated building styles, but does not define that. Indeed, we found out with Mr. Carwash that there's a big gap in what compatible building styles mean. There is nothing coordinated about Dixie Highway. If we're going to achieve that, we need to provide more specifics. The P D O, plan development option, provides a way for someone to develop a parcel in a C three zoning district for a use which is not allowed in the C three zoning district, such as a car wash or a retail building exceeding seventy-five thousand square feet. for a use which is not allowed in the C three zoning district, such as a car wash or a retail building exceeding seventy-five thousand square feet. A good bit of the, the, we need some method of providing more mitigation for the development of something allowed in a more intense C three district, but that is not allowed in a C one allowed use. If it cannot be done, then the alternative is to change to local commercial, change to the master plan designation to lo- uh, from local commercial to general commercial. As a side note, while we are at it, I believe we also need to find a way to provide for more possibility of residential uses along Dixie as a way to encourage redevelopment. I also recognize that the very north end of Dixie does have some different development patterns than the rest of the district, and this may entail some form of a subarea for the Dixie Highway overlay district. Finally, I believe this fix will require a mon- minor modification to the master plan to establish a new use category, call it mixed use, for example, and showing most of Dixie Highway lying within that land use. And finally, um, as we've already taken the initiative, we need to rezone a couple par- parcels at the north end. So that kinda synopsis is what I would like it to achieve. Anybody else?
I'll say that, you know, I think we should look at north of White Lake Road as a subarea, because we certainly don't want, it's not gonna have the same design standards as the southern part, in my opinion.
Agreed, agreed.
So, uh, we did the same exact thing with Sashaba, north of seventy-five is transitioned to residential, and south is, you know, commercial pedestrian, um, driven type, uh, development. I think we should do the same thing there, uh, with the marshes and the, the building setbacks off the road farther, certainly not a build to, you know, I don't consider Dixie Highway a pedestrian, um, a pedestrian friendly area now. We do have a lot of multifamily and a lot of housing that could walk, but it's, the sidewalks are too dangerous and, and they're too close to the road, and there's, and they're, actually, the shoulders in the last spot.
Shoulder, it's not a sidewalk.
Right, so now.
Do you want it to be walkable?
Yes.
Oh, it's in the D D A plan.
Yeah, so we're, so, I'm gonna bring that, I'm gonna bring that up, so as a member of the D D A, um, one of the goals and objectives that, at least, uh, I've pro- proposed with other people is that we use the money to move those sidewalks off the road, uh, because we'll have the money to do it, and now's the time to.
Sidewalks, those are, those are paved shoulders by the, by the county or the state or whatever.
Right, well, I'm not, it's really bad north of White Lake Road, and then it's intermittent south of, of there, so they go in and out as you go because of the topography, so we would have the funds to retain and move back, take out the paved. So a lot of spots too, and then, you know, like, uh, for instance, in my, where my building is, and, and Gus is across the street, because our parking lots are so close to the road, 'cause the ro- the road has been widened since the fifties when the buildings were put up, somebody thought it was a good idea to put the brick pavers between the curbs and the parking lots and say, so that people didn't walk through the parking lot. But that's so dangerous that we lost the greenbelt and didn't achieve a place for people to walk, 'cause the pavers are so broken up, and there's so much busted concrete and debris from the road, that it's not safe to walk on those pavers. So I, I'm working with the D D A, trying to say, let's get all the pavers back out and let's put grass back in, and if they have to walk along the side of that in the parking lot, it's still safer, you know, and then it would align with the new sidewalks that are off the parking lot, so you're not going like this the whole. 'Cause you can't, e- even the way they did it with, in front of, uh, at, in front of the buildings at the bottom of Waterford Hill with the pavers, there's no ramp up onto the dangerous pavers running along the curb, it's still a straight up curb, and then it jumps onto pavers between the parking lot and the road. So that's, it's not a feasible, it, it still was never done in a way that, that pedestrian traffic, or handicap people could even use that, because the curb is still straight up and down at each of those locations.
It's so intermittent, it's hard to stay in the same spot.
Off topic, obviously, but the D D A's work is going to work, um, on that, the south of White Lake Road, 'cause that's where the boundary stops at Foster, I think, is where we stop at, and then I think that's where, that's the end of the P U D. Other than the one vacant parcel before Foster on the left-hand side, the subarea could stop at the same line as the D D A, or it could be pulled back to White Lake Road, uh, and that would be easier to implement because of the, it's a P U D in front of Stone, um, Stonewall Tharms, Stonewall Farm?
Parks of Stonewood.
Parks of Stonewood, Parks of Stonewood, so it being a P U D gives us the flexibility to change those design standards as part of the P U D there, you know? So I guess that what we should establish is, Bill, the, the line of where we think a subarea would be created.
I would, I would agree, and I, that north of White Lake, both sides, um, and maybe it makes sense to start with that first. I, but I don't wanna lose sight of the middle and southern part either.
Well, I, I, just real quick, I think that the, if we do the overlay district, design standards of Dixie, south of White Lake Road, um, the D D A will pick, will pick that up as part of, you know, we can help as part of that, uh, trying to find some.
So we would defer to the D D A's design standards there, and then we take over on the north, north of, uh.
Or the D D A would adopt, try to adopt the planning committee, you know, we, we don't, the D D A's not gonna adopt design standards, they're gonna implement, they're gonna implement things. So.
You could fund them.
Well, we could fund design standard changes, and, and clearly what we do, if, say, we were able to hang flags on the trees or, you know, on the light posts or whatever, to, to identify the district, it also is going to stop at about the sub-area we're talking about, 'cause we don't have a, we're not, we're not past that point, the D D A doesn't have.
Bill, I think it make, it does make more sense to have, like, two, two phases, one south of White Lake and one north of White Lake, 'cause they are, it is certainly a transition zone, and, and then it helps us.
Yep.
Because we, we're seeking D D A feedback anyway, so.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds like a plan.
Um, Megan, you wanna?
Right.
Go through what you provided, or just continue some just casual discussion?
I, I think the casual discussion is helpful, so I've, I've heard from, I think, Mr. Chair heard from you, Mr. Morocco heard from you, Mr. Porsha, Mr. Richie, Mr. Wap- Womeyer?
Pretty good.
And Mr. Suter, it would be nice if you would wanna chime in to say what your concerns are for the area and, um, borders, whether you agree with what's been said, or you have some different ideas, or things to add.
So I actually struggled with this a little bit, because I was trying to figure out just how many layers of, of legality we were trying to put on it. It sounds like, or, and there were several options listed out here that you could go with, but it sounds like what we're kinda falling down on is the potential of adding a subarea to the already existing overlay district?
Um.
As the easiest way of adding.
Doing that and, and putting more standards in the existing too.
So I, I kinda like that, 'cause it was the least complex of the options that were kinda laid out here.
Yeah.
Um, but I struggled a little bit with comparison to Sashaba Road, so help me understand a little bit more where this parallels, right, I think you were saying this is very similar, and I don't see it as.
No, just that it, we changed it on Sashaba.
Right.
It's to be buildings close to the road, pedestrian friendly, parking lots in the rear. Once you go over seventy-five, it changes to buildings further back off the road, more wooded, buffering, transition to rural residential.
Where you're gonna get a residential as you go, you know.
Right.
Whereas on Dixie, it's, you know, we have kind of a, a, a mix moving out from White Lake and, and north of commercial and a little residential. And as you get into White, as you get into Springfield, as you cross under seventy-five, it's kind of the Wild West, right? It's dealer, grocery store, party store, house, church, tank, you know, it's just, it's, you know, although, it's the Wild West as you go forward. So to me, that, that doesn't, you know, merge into the residential thing we have on Sashaba, where it's becomes a lot of subs and neighborhoods going up in there.
No, it was more though that we had the sanctuaries and the marshes in the front, we had the Othomasville Building that became the, you know, city living with the, we have the burn buildings.
Yep.
Um, we've got residential streets coming off of it, and we have a lot of vacant land that hasn't been developed, so that's why that subsection is now our opportunity. Our zoning is inappropriate to the master plan as transitional to residential, so the C four, C three, commercial next to residential homes.
Doesn't work.
Has always been identified as inappropriate, we just have never taken the steps to rezone them to be what the master plan's called for in the last twenty-five years, which is what dialogue has been started.
Transition, and, and what's weird here is you kinda transition it, and then as you go to under seventy-five, you trans back, transition back.
Well, and we don't control it.
Can't control it.
It's kinda this weird bottleneck type of thing, so.
We don't even control anything past Big Lake Road.
Yeah, I think that, from between Foster and Big Lake Road, you know, that's, you know, been brought up many times now, that's where it's kinda re- uh, zone commercial. But the back end of it all backs up to residential.
Well, so that was the other thing, when I think of this corridor, one of the biggest things I think of this, but a pain in the butt for everybody forever is the misalignment of Big Lake and, you know, the, the intersection there, and this, that's not really touched to this, it's kind of the northernmost portion of what the subarea would be.
When we brought up the last development that was talking to go there, there was many residents came in and said that they, they hope that Big Lake never gets realigned.
We don't, we're not looking.
They're worried about the traffic.
Right.
Right.
Well, and the residential, so, and I think that there's a consensus, at least for the people I've talked to, is that we wanna put the protections in place that Dixie does not turn into Sashaba, we don't want fast food restaurants, we don't want hotels there, we want, um,
You know, looking for off-ramp.
We don't want it to be, we don't want it to be a stop for the off-ramp, we already have one of those.
The other side, the other side of the bridge.
Right, well, that's their problem, you know, on our side, we want it to be, it's our, you know, US Highway, more rural entranceway to the township, and it be businesses that operate during normal business hours because of their proximity to the residential home. So that's why the Red Barn gas station was shot down.
Yep.
Um, the, the alignment of the road was not gonna be as important as people, you know, back in the day when everyone was talking about it. Um, we just got a lot of public input on that.
Well, and, and one of the other things is, we've heard talk that there appears to be more, more demand for residential than commercial these days, and.
So multifamily mix.
Yeah.
Right, which was kinda the whole discussion when the, kind of senior, uh, development went on there in the corner.
And it might have been back when you were on the commission, we were together a long ti- when the courthouse was still gonna go there, someone had proposed retail below,
Yep.
residential above, a little, so.
Eighty-five different proposals for that.
So we're thinking more along that being a more marketable strategy and a more compatible use to the residential, so.
It's, the transition is weird, though, you know, as we move into, and it's already existing in Springfield, right, so there's nothing you're gonna do about that, it's just gonna end up being.
I think the sensitivity is really, you know, to the, to the residents of the southwest, you know, 'cause that, whatever we do with that property has to be compatible with the residential, that's, that's what really, uh, in the master plan and everything, was really just talking about commercial. It's like, no credence is going to the residential area.
Right. It just still surprised me that there's not, there wasn't much support for an alignment on those roads, 'cause I know everybody that travels that normally, I hear from all the time, it's just, it's just dangerous.
I think it's gonna come back, uh, up again, it's just, it, it definitely wasn't popular with the, uh, with the Red Barn.
Yeah, I think it was cost prohibitive too in the past, 'cause whoever owned the property had.
With the big gas station there, and the, adding that traffic.
Yeah.
Was, um.
Certainly the way it is today would be bad.
I think the biggest key that came out of that though too is, is really, you know, like the ramp, the off-ramp, um, amenities, we don't wanna be the off-ramp stop for that. I guess to me, that's what I got.
Those farther down.
That's what I got out of most of the public interaction was that, it, it's not so much any one business that they don't want, it's that they don't want necessarily to be drawing people off the expressway, you know, at off-ramp to that. It's like, if, whatever we do, we want it to be more of a local, uh, commercial, like Sam said, I guess, that, that, you know, operates in the, I guess, normal hours where still residents are, you know, they don't have to worry about noise or light or whatever.
You know, again, the only thing I was, little concerned on this is, it looked like a lot of added, um, regulations, I like the idea of just, uh, amending in the subarea as part of the, the existing overlay, made more sense to me.
And then.
Oh, while we're just, just wondering, we just, uh, looked at that gas station there on Sashaba, right by I seventy-five, expanding it and whatnot, that is falling into a place for people to come off the expressway.
Well, it's already there, so we, we're, we're hoping that it's our intention, let's keep that there and not add more.
But we just did, we added restaurants on both sides of the gas station.
No, right, but in a designated area that's already for people to get off the highway and eat, you know, and get right back on again.
Coming off the highway with things like restaurants and boardines, and that is kind of the, the vision that we have as opposed, that I think we're getting once, as opposed to like getting off, getting gas, getting back on, is.
Well, and the other thing on that side is the consent judgment, I think, controls.
North side of Sashaba.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I guess, the biggest thing is we're, like Jason was saying, we have that there in Sashaba, we wanna make sure we don't do that again on Dixie.
Right, right, right.
And certainly the D D A doesn't want us, is not in favor of dirtying up Dixie to make it another, you know, off-ramp stop for transient people. And the consensus, you know, I mean, I've been on the planning commission on and off for twenty-seven years, it's always been amenities for the residents, we don't want any more people coming here, and for good reason, 'cause that's traffic, that we already have Pine Knob, we already, we're not, we're not, you know, and I have always tried to, you know, have opinions that way, is we don't want people to just come here and be in our way and cloud up and dirty up the roads and everything, we just want the best, we just wanna, we already have Pine Knob and that happening, we don't need to draw them in, and the Deer Lake people are not going to want to contend with a bunch of high-use, high-volume, um, transient traffic. They'd much rather deal with local people at a pace of local, uh, you know, patronizing local businesses by local people, you know, and we. Sashaba's been compromised by that, but it, it, it suits it better with the boulevard, it suits it better with the way the onramps and offramps are and it's role, you know, it's just a, if we had to pick one of the three exits, Sashaba was the one with Pine Knob that makes the most sense.
It's, it's hard not to with Pine Knob, it's, it's just kinda built that there, that's the number, but I liked your first, so, I, I don't wanna exclude people, but, you know, amenities for the residents first has always kind of been the, and then, you know, if it happens to happen to somebody else, that's fine, but amenities for the residents first is what we've been really looking for for, forever, right?
Yeah, these businesses that have been coming here promoting themselves are not necessarily to provide services for the residents.
I get it.
Yeah.
Megan, to give you more, you, you, do you wanna say something?
Well, so what I'm hearing from you is that, what you wanna do is amend the Dixie overlay, create two subareas, one that's north of White Lake, one that's south. But there's a real concern about the uses in design so that it serves the residents and does not appear function as something that's quote-unquote off-ramp. Um, so that goes into maybe constraining uses in that overlay. Right now, you, with the P D O, you allow every use in the zoning ordinance, you can whittle those uses down. And in fact, maybe make a, and make, and that's a good way to bring that residential component into anywhere, into the overlay, to just say, in that overlay, anywhere that, it could be a permitted use or a specially used. Um, and then, so then you can allow that mix within. What I would encourage you to keep though, using that P D O, is the flexibility and setbacks, because you have such small, weird-shaped lots, um, especially on the sides. And I think also, maybe what would be beneficial is to really concentrate on landscaping and buffering requirements that butt up to residential, because this is one of these places, one of, it's a lot, it's a lot closer to your residence than in Sashaba, there seems to be, those lots are bigger, they're deeper, so that there's more room to have those and.
There's, there's almost no single family adjacent to commercial property on Sashaba.
Right, and then they're definitely, there definitely is here, so maybe, of, toughen up those standards within the overlay.
And are you talking, I see some of the controls of the P D L being different for the north section.
Mm-hmm.
So are you talking, same principles maybe applying to both sides? So are you talking, same principles maybe applying to both sections, but different principles for the north than?
I would say there were different design standards for the north and for the south. Cause in the north, you're, you want to keep that, that trans, the kind of like more rural transition. The wider, the bigger setbacks to, for it to be more natural in nature when you get. When you get to south of way, like you've got a lot of stuff that's already built. And that is prime for redevelopment.
Agreed.
And so that maybe needs a stricter design standard, but maybe not as urban as Sashawal.
But the, the north section, particularly if we're successful in these rezonings we're going to do. We don't have the misalignment that we have in the south section, so as I, as I said in my introductory remarks. The PDO doesn't really, in my mind, only partially addresses that misalignment.
I would agree, yes.
If, if you can get the north section where it's pretty well matches the master plan. The PDO concept I think works.
And they're all mostly vacant, so now's the time to get the align, get the underlying zoning aligned right. With caveats of special land use and stuff to allow multifamily. I think on south Sashawal, Bill's concern in the, in South Dixie is Bill's concern and the DDA's concern is compatibility. And a hodgepodge of, you know, aging and mess, you know, and messy looking facilities, but I think that, you know, driving up and down it every day, working on Dixie. If you took the TCF bank, you know, you go across the street to the Outback, then you go to Crispelli's. You know, even the medical building, there's, there's tones and colors of buildings that have been. That have been built in the last twenty years or thirty years that are somewhat, have some uniformity, a little bit of, you know, you know, some uniformity.
I think we could tighten up the, uh, the build standards, to me, all, all commercial buildings, and this is just me speaking. I think all commercial buildings should be all stone, brick.
Hardscape, hard, hard material.
Hard material, and not just in the front, all the way around. And it's, you know, it's, yes, it makes building more expensive, but, you know, to me, that should just be part of the design criteria.
We've implemented that on other people before, like the car wash over here and stuff.
We had some reasoning on that because of those, maybe the visual on four sides versus, because of traffic flow and that type of thing.
Can I drill down on that building materials concept, because I, on the surface, I agree with you, but we have seen some buildings that have those. Those metal panels and you know more the technical terms.
That's what I'm saying, I think we could, we could incorporate some, I'm not trying to limit architecture per se, I guess, you know, I'd like it to be. You know, somewhat conservative, like, you know, but I don't wanna, there, you know, there's many new buildings I've seen that are very nice looking, so I'm, I'm not trying to eliminate materials. I just don't want, you know, drive-in material, vinyl siding, you know, all those types of things, to me, are no goes on, on new commercial properties.
And one of the things I've found in looking around, that, one of the things that I find makes building, commercial buildings look more attractive. I don't know what you call them, but, um, accents, like crowns around the top, and. What do you call them on the corners where they, yeah, and, and things around the windows, you know, not just a straight, smooth wall of brick.
Yeah, and you have a lot of that in the Sashawal Town Center, you, you have requirements for those, and those could be added to Dixie.
I gotta echo Ron's, I got that car wash once a week, every time I go in, I'm like, this is the nicest car wash.
Which one?
The one on, uh, Sashawal here, right, where you went brick all the way around and, and I saw the blue pieces going, I'm like, nah, you don't, don't do that.
We do need to be careful with that, because there are a lot, you know, Bowman Chevrolet's got a lot of metal panels on it. The Credit Union's got a lot of metal panels on it, um, now, if we limit the, I'm not a po- some of that looks okay. It's, it's, it's a little hard to palette on the beautiful brick car wash, bright blue metal panels, taking away from the architecture. When they're incorporated into the design originally, um. And they're proportionate, you know, it would look like we added them over there, like they're totally out of place on that building, you know, but on other buildings that have been designed that way, they're not so out of place.
With the metal and glass, like I said, I don't have any, uh, hard against that, I'm just more like, I don't like the, the drive-in materials and the vinyl sidos and those types of things.
Agreed.
And the colors, we can restrict the colors of, it could be earth tones or metallics or some, you know, something that.
Should be a, a, a table of stuff that we, we think are compatible, so.
General suggestion.
That way, it leaves it open for architectural, uh, uniqueness, I guess, you know, that type of thing, but.
Joe?
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, how are we gonna move forward on this? On, on the issues that we just, you know, enumerated, and I know I didn't talk a lot on.
Megan, you, what do you, um, thinking, you're obviously taking diligent notes there and.
What mechanism?
You'll come back with, um.
If it's okay with Mr. Robman, I can come back with a memo outlining, like.
Strategy.
Okay.
Well, out, outlining how you would up, amend the zoning ordinance in order to achieve these goals.
And do you wanna focus just on the north section first, or do you wanna do?
I, what I'd like to do, with your permission, is to do amendment to capture this whole conversation, and then. You as a planning commission decide what your next steps and priorities are.
Okay.
Out of those.
Okay.
I just think you're gonna have different criteria for those two sections, that's all, but I mean, to me, it's, you're treating it the same, you just have different criteria for the north section versus the west.
I, I just have one question, uh, for Megan, when she is, when you said then we would decide the next steps. What's the next step, an example of a next step?
So you can have three things that you can do, um, one is there's a number of parcels that you've identified that, um. Do not, the, the zoning in the future land use are incompatible, and you could initiate township rezonations on those. And we can identify those in the memo, um, it's also to, um, change, what did you say, find section nine oh?
It's probably to create a whole new section, just like north Sashawal overlay, and have it be a north Dixie overlay, or something to that.
Right, and then to also then have design standards and, um, for both north and south. And then, but to kind of, to change that PDO and what its intent is, right now that PDO, the way it's written. It opens up everything, it opens up all the uses, it opens up all the setbacks, right? Um, and what I'm hearing from you is, we don't, we don't need that anymore, we're, we're getting development in this corridor. We feel like that's gonna come with or without that kind of wild, wild west mentality. What we want is this development to really contribute to the corridor and to the residences, and it needs some more standards on it. So then, that's tightening up uses and then putting more design standards and landscaping standards in.
Would the design standards be tied to some infrastructure? Like an overlay district or tied to?
It'd be tied to the overlay district, so if you, for example, if you were in the south, you own a piece of property in the south Dixie overlay. Um, we're requiring that you have sixty percent stone, brick, or similar materials. Um, with a preference for earth tones, da 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 da. But if you are in the north, and, and your setbacks are the underlying zoning district, or they can be flexed. If you are in the north overlay district, you must have a setback of, I'm making this up, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. Twenty-five feet, um, and that needs to have, be vegetated.
Yeah, cause we're not going for the pedestrian friendly approach, we're going for the landscaped in approach, you know?
And, and you must have this type of landscaping or preserve all of the vegetation in front.
Yep, I think you got it.
Those are, so that's what, that's what it would be.
Dialing it in.
That's how you would implement it.
Okay, and how, and, and, cause I like the nitty gritty part of this. What exactly, how would it be implemented, what would have to change to make that happen?
You would pass, you would recommend, you would have a public hearing, you would define language, have a public hearing. And then recommend a change to that section of the zoning ordinance to the township board.
Okay, does, does anything that we're doing in this discussion, because we're talking about changing zoning. Relate to what we were talking about earlier, um, uh, what we're gonna do, I forgot what.
With the tree preservation?
Yeah, with the tree ordinance, I mean, I know they're not related, I know the trees and the design standards, but I mean, we're talking about amendments to the zoning ordinance. They have to be coordinated in some process way, or it doesn't make any difference.
They don't have to be coordinated, they can run separately.
Separately, okay.
And, and you might wanna do that in terms of, um, clarity to the public. But also clarity to township board about what they're looking at.
Yeah, I think we should do them as separate entities, moving at whatever pace we can expedite, and it's, you know, it's gonna be a working. I'm, I'm looking, I'm hoping it's gonna be a working year to do a lot of housekeeping and cleanup that we haven't done before, and, and, and it, it's literally. We have two meetings a month at the township board, and hopefully we will here until we get some of this cleaned up, if we, if we have a lot of, uh, busy agendas. In the first meeting of the month, you know, and I don't think it's a big deal to add one thing on there, if, you know, or another second reading, or, you know. As we get them done, and it's just a chip away at it, uh, we used to try to consolidate them, but again, they're usually in a similar thing. So if we're looking at rental ordinances, or we're looking at this, we try to put them together so it makes sense, you know, not doing one every. And that's a whole, the next thing on the agenda, so that's like a whole nother ordinance amendment, so we can't just ball, it's, then it's too big of a piece of puzzle. We're moving, if we're trying to do them all, everything at once.
It will affect each other though, the tree goes through, then it's gonna affect the properties that they say, we're just like any other, so. Even though they're not bundled together, they're gonna impact, both, both pieces will eventually impact that, that corridor.
Right, right, I see, Sam is like taking the two hundred year old people off the social security rolls and cleaning them up.
That's you doing that? No, I just, I've been here a long time, I wanna get some stuff done, you know? You're missing your social security check.
We're ready.
So I, I just wanna emphasize on, on the southern, that ability to. Apply some of these new standards we're gonna come up with to parcels, all the parcels.
Yeah.
Not just via the PDO.
All the parcels, anything in the overlay would affect all the parcels, and that's the situation on Sashawal right now, is that if you're on Sashawal. You have to, you have to abide by those standards.
Okay.
I have one more question.
And, and if, I'll get to you in a minute, um. I, I thought I had on site, site access, again, this is south, more south Dixie, cause we have more smaller parcels. It seems to me it would make sense to have that be a stronger requirement on the smaller parcels. If you got to a big parcel, like, you know. Site access is nice, but just by the nature of it being big with a lot of frontage, it's not gonna add the number of in and outs. So maybe site access isn't important, cross access.
Cross access, I guess, is that what you're talking about?
Important as it is on the smaller parcels.
I don't know, we've got some, you know, the problem with that is we've got some parcels that really need cross access and the residents, the tent, the other owners won't allow it. The bowling alley's one of them, the McDonald's is one of them, the Starbucks is one of them, I mean, all of.
So why there's not cross access at the bowling alley, cause they don't want it, I was wondering.
They wouldn't let McDonald's do it back in the day, and then we had the same problem with the Starbucks in the, in the Kroger Plaza, which is crazy ridiculous. We can't, um.
People usually don't want it, because then they, yeah.
So forget what I said, just require it.
We can't always make them do it, but we should certainly encourage it.
If we get every parcel, even if the neighbor doesn't allow it, as long as we can make him build that, uh, space in there. Now, if the other thing changes.
Design it with a future, a future option for the new owner who's being a problem, hopefully he sells it, and then you can reapproach.
You're gonna remodel, okay, you gotta put in this cross access.
Sure, so I just wanna clarify one thing about site access, so when you said there should be a stronger requirement for a smaller parcel.
I meant to say cross access, that's.
For cross access, okay, and then we're not tiring in site access, that there needs to be certain spacing between driveways.
That would be nice, but.
Road commission demands that, no matter what, anyway.
That's true, yes, okay.
Um, on landscaping, or, or, no, pedestrian pathways and stuff, just, I like graphics and visual. So I think examples are really good, landscaping, um, obviously. Whatever we need to maintain, some of the nice green frontages along Dixie on the north end. And to keep that going, and then in, in the south part, it would be nice to require a narrow strip of green belt. And I think, I think that's already been hinted at, but just.
We do now, don't we?
What's that?
We, we require a green belt from the road to the safety path on Dixie, right?
Do we?
For, for buildings that have, aren't fifty years old, right? For the new ones, we're not putting any, any paved curbs.
And then on, uh, uh, architecture, again, we talked about that, and I, and I like, I like graphics and visuals.
Okay, and then for streetscapes, I feel like that really, from what you were saying, that should be left up to the DDA. In terms of lighting and those type of elements.
Change the lighting, but it would be the DDA, it wouldn't be an ordinance thing, cause it's not our road.
Can we provide some suggestions?
Maybe the DDA can provide.
Well, it can be part of the design standards for sure, I think the DDA should pick up the cost of figuring out how to get the sidewalks to be safe and off the road. We don't want the township to just initiate that plan and pay, you know, and design that if the DDA, it would real, you know. If that's something that the DDA could pay for and do, uh, as, you know, doing drawings of how we would move the sidewalks off the road. I think that, that's, that's more of a DDA thing than a ordinance or design standard, it could be mentioned. But I think the, the work is probably gonna need to get done through the DDA, not the planning commission.
So let me rephrase my question, four things in this amendment of the Dixie overlay. Do you want there to be streetscape elements like there is for the Sashawal over Town Center, where we're requiring certain types of fences? Brick pavers, a decorative fence, decorative walls, decorative fence, benches, lighting.
Gets back to that.
I mean, it's very specific in Sashawal.
I think if we don't, then it won't be cohesive, I don't know about the fencing and the post, it could look goofy, because it, it's the option.
The likelihood of that redeveloping in the south half to a point where there's cohesiveness might not be obtainable. Do we require street trees?
You do require street trees and things like that, but this would be in addition.
One of the things to me you could do in Dixie is try to come up with some kind of tree canopy that, you know, closer to the road, something that, you know. That, you know, when you go down M fifteen through downtown, and, you know, especially north of Washington Street, you know, the, the tree canopy.
Gorgeous, but can you do that on Dixie?
Well, I guess what I'm getting at though is if you, if you concentrate on, uh, you know, if you're not gonna put in fencing or whatever, obviously. You got your power lines, you gotta watch out for, but if there's some amenity like that, that you could build in and, and try to, you know, it take years to, to fill in. But I'm just saying, if you could, if you look, come up with some kind of look like that. Just use that as an idea, some kind of look you could have.
If we develop a design standard or an idea, like the DDA does have the ability to go plant street trees up and down Dixie Highway. On everyone's property, whether you want them or not, we have the ability to do that, so that's something that we can't do as a planning commission, but luckily we have a DDA. So if you guys, if we come up with ideas, we have a mechanism to implement them.
That's like a look you could do that does, isn't like fencing or, you know, that type of stuff, so.
Are we gonna try to get people to move their buildings towards the road, or keep them back on Dixie?
South of White Lake?
Yeah, well, both.
What I'm hearing is north of White Lake is to push them back.
Yeah, I would agree.
South of White Lake, I haven't heard consensus from the.
They're like all over the place, south, south of it.
I mean, like where the bank is next to the Taco Bell and stuff, but, you know, that, that, I think that's about as close as you wanna get. I don't think the setbacks are terrible the way they are now.
So just leave the setbacks from the underlying zoning for the front, for.
Well, it made me think of it, I, yes, to answer your question, but if you have a situation where that's gonna be up close to the road, float the concept of, I call it a three hundred and sixty degree building. Where you have attractive facades all the way around.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, to me, commercial builders need to be that way.
I don't know how the residents are gonna, how the business owners would take, starting to intermittently, where they're all lined up, shoving one all the way up to the front of the road, you know, blocking all, you know.
That could be handled in the site plan when it comes in, though, if they're gonna change the building, and we could talk about.
What's the setback right now? And what do you think? Give me an example on Dixie that we would all know that's about that, the Burger King, Chase Bank on the corner, maybe Road, something like that.
Pretty much everything on that easterly side, like Speedway, all of those are basically consistent.
It's pretty far.
Yeah, it's good, it's good enough to put some trees and grass and stuff.
Doesn't, I don't wanna jump off the, the tree thing a little bit, I got thinking, it's like, if you don't put trees and try to come up with a tree canopy, maybe there could be some other flowers or bushes that are cohesive all the way down there.
Like gra, even grasses?
I guess I was just trying to come up with something more striking than just a, a patch of grass, cause now, you know, ten times.
Maybe a palette of, you, you have a palette of perennials that you would use, whether it's decorative grasses or dailies.
Some places like your building where there's, there's, it's hard to have any green space right there, but if you had some plantings like that, there could be planters along there that carry out the same look and that type of thing, so there's an option for. Right, it's like an intentional architectural look.
I mean, we, we, I've done that, is put, you know, a big watering trough out there full of, you know, reeds and flowers, and it, you know, I mean, you're talking about a three foot spot with a truck doing sixty miles an hour, semi rolling by.
If it's consistent, you know, along the corridor, it looks like.
Doesn't really matter what it is, as long as it's consistent and pretty.
So we could look at plantings, consistent, um, consistent, um, vegetation.
Come up with something, I guess, to give you that look, you're, you're trying to come up with some architectural styling or whatever, and that's, maybe it could be vegetation versus hardscape or something.
Like, there's stuff like burning bushes, wherever you're, everything turned red. And it could be in and off the road and still be cohesive.
You know, that guy's participating, it's kinda like the people that put up the lights on all their buildings, and one guy doesn't do it, you know.
We're just gonna have the Christmas lights out there.
But like, say, if you have that look, and everybody's, you know, that guy's participating, he's got, he's got his stuff, you know.
Megan, you good?
Yes, I'm good.
Cause we could do this all night.
Last question, at the last meeting, we, um, sent a directive to start the rezoning, or investigating. Where are you on that?
We can, for your next planning commission meeting, look at, um, I think we were having confirmation, getting confirmation of those parcels? Okay.
I think we, I think we know them, they're in the, I mean, um.
They're in the motion.
Yep.
Although I had a correction to, she had, I think, five parcels, I think there's only four.
Yeah, and I made that correction, so we'll start to look at them, and I think we, you guys will have to do an analysis.
Megan, I think on that map you made, that's much nicer than the ones I made.
Yeah, but the future land use designations are wrong, I caught that today.
Okay, and there's, there's one that I think you've got the, well, according, I won't say you've got it wrong, cause I trust your judgment, but I double checked the tax I D, this little parcel right here? And I'm pretty sure that's C two, or no, R two.
This one?
The, the one next to the big county parcel.
Oh, next to residential there?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's R two, I double checked it.
Okay, we'll, I'll, I'll double check these, and then what we'll do is we'll do an analysis of each one, and have that for your next work session.
Okay. Everybody ready to move on?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Joe, you wanna talk about your subcommittee?
Uh, well, we haven't done much, um, other than, I did some identifying and passing out information to Ron and to Belinda, and actually, we've had, Brian has added some things to the, to the list that I originally came up with, and besides that, I, Brian, I apologize, I didn't know you were gonna put this document in here, cause I have another one that's updated.
Okay.
It hasn't, it hasn't changed, other than adding two, so it's not, it's not scary.
Well, I wanted to, in consultation with, uh, the building official, the, you know, our code enforcement officer, I, I wanted to talk about signage, and some clarification on signage that we're finding. You know, last year, we picked up about thirty-two hundred signs in the township, temporary signs. And, um, what, it's, and we picked up about six hundred already this year. So, uh, we really wanted to address some of the ambiguities in this or, in the sign ordinance, since we revised it in twenty twenty with the Gilbert versus Reed decision. And, um, really, it's just addressing signs prohibited in all districts. The flags that used to be not allowed, those little spinner flags, those things are, were never allowed in the previous ordinance, but in the drafting of this, they disappeared, so we wanted to put those back in as not permitted. Inflatable devices, we actually had a couple people request to put like a big gorilla on top of their building, and we said, no. And we don't want those in, in our township.
Just to interrupt you for a second, I thought the little flag things we put out, uh, were, I thought we did allow those during work hours. They had to put them out, they could put them out in the morning, take them out in the afternoon.
No, I mean, it's, it's difficult, because a temporary sign, the max height is six feet. And it's, we have a whole table on temporary signs, and the temporary sign provisions, Sam probably remembers this, during all, all these discussions was so confusing, uh, because we had to, we had to lump everything together. Uh, you couldn't call it an election, you know, election sign, you couldn't call it a real estate sign. Uh, so, we, we were trying to, it's been very difficult to administer, for, especially code enforcement, trying to deal with signs all up and down, or at street corners. We have provisions to prevent them from, in, on street corners, but not necessarily where they're on people's property. Or, you know, it's out on Sashaba Road and between the sidewalk and the curb, um, where that can lead to distraction. So, uh, what, what we just, what we proposed in, in, uh, under temporary signs is not necessarily a sign setback for ground signs that are temporary, but a distance from the edge of the pavement or curb. So basically, twenty-five feet away, cause if we looked at M dot standards, road commission standards, one was thirty, one was twenty. So we decided, let's pick a middle point where you can put a sign out there, but it's gotta be twenty-five feet from back, from the curb, or if there's no curb, you know, the, the edge of the pavement.
What if you can't meet that?
Well, that's.
So I guess I got two signs, cause I have people who've asked me about it, you know, who have, uh.
Yeah, Dixie is the hard part.
You know, I mean, an A frame sign that, that says open, um, uh, because of an, uh, hard to see business, because of the tree row and the topography, that they wanna put out during business hours and take it back in when they close at night.
Sandwich board, when you said it.
Yeah, 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 sandwich board, something that's less than six feet, not a flying flag that denotes, hey, we're open, but it's gotta go in and out with business hours, it's not something that's left out.
I thought that's what we talked about, back in two thousand eight, nine, when we talked about the sandwich boards.
I think there was like a forty-five day.
It was like, there was a forty-five. Maximum days you could do it, but I mean, there was, we talked about doing that, but it had to be during work hours.
Yeah, so we changed, temporary signs used to be fourteen days, four times a year. We changed it with this ordinance to thirty days out, then you gotta take it in for thirty days, reapply, and it can go back out for thirty days, so it's not just, you can't just come in on the thirty-first day and apply again and keep your sign out there.
And I'm not talking marketing, we're talking just open, you know, not like, not advertise, it's not a sign to advertise goods or services, it's just to say, you're open. That's another way of eliminating, you know, flashing open signs, and more distracting things that you're trying, you know, um, so, you know, that's where.
Well, you've taken the flashing signs out, like, you have provisions in your sign ordinance that deal with flashing.
I know some new, like liquor stores got like, uh, the open thing, does, it does all the twirling lights and colors and.
Under your ordinance, that.
Yeah, like, that kinda different lighting is not permitted.
Is not permitted.
And, yeah, we've had that conversation.
But we're seeing more and more L E D, um, L E D, um, borders and flashing and signs that are in the window, or affixed that are, uh, projecting out, you know.
Tobacco people were having constant conversations, cause they.
On Sashaba, or Dixie, I mean?
Dixie and Sashaba, there's one on each that, that has the borders, we go over there, we, we tell them, we're gonna issue you a ticket, if you keep them up, and they take them down, and then, next thing you know, the next weekend, they're back up, cause we're not here.
And what, and that's, you know, so, they, that one on Dixie has a similar situation where there's just curb and parking lot. So there's no way to put an open sign out, you know, and, and, you know, for a business to say you're op, open in that parameter, so.
That's the hard part, is Dixie.
Well, and under the Supreme Court case, you can't regulate by what the sign says. So you can't say an open or close.
Sale or.
Sale sign is different than vote for so and so is different than.
Control the content.
Than the, yeah, if you have to read it, you, you can't, you can't regulate it, um, to see what type of sign is. But what you can do is regulate by type, um, either by its nature and temporary. Um, or, um, Mr. Appen and I were having a conversation beforehand about how like a sandwich sign, or an A frame sign, that's a different construction than what you call a snipe sign, where you stick it in the ground.
Political sign or something.
Most political signs are those. Um, so, it would be legitimate to say, an A frame sign can only be out, a portable A frame or sandwich sign can only be out during business hours. But a snipe sign could stay all the time as a temporary sign, because it only for, for a limited time, because it's not gonna, it's not gonna blow away in a big gust of wind, or be subject to things, it doesn't need monitoring.
But we don't wanna say what you're saying, that we can, they can be of any time.
So, but you could say that.
Till somebody runs over it.
I, I would say, yeah, definitely for A frame signs, that you could say, these, these are out during business hours, and you have to bring them in. The temporary signs, where it's a snipe sign, I think that's a question for the township attorney, which you're gonna have to run these through the township attorney anyway, because signs are one of the most litigious pieces of zoning.
And for clarity, like, an A frame signs, if it has to be put up and taken down by the business owner, is the business owner's sign?
Yes.
If we start allowing, would you call them snipe signs?
I've never heard that before.
If we start allowing, the difference between those and the A frame is that those are put up randomly by people. Those are not being monitored, those don't even go on the property that they belong on, the, totally different, totally different entity, you know, of, of those, is, is where I would, uh, where I'd be much more opposed to snipe signs and keeping those to thirty days, you know, whatever, opposed to the ones to, everyone wants more signage and more things. So I think we do need to be conscious of the business owner that's like, I'm open, here's my open sign, I'm closed. The other ones that they're just littering up the township twenty-four seven, when they're closed, when they're open, you know, that's, I think, a bigger, um, the flags that just wave constantly, you know, that's stuff that's just left out to just make it more destructive and less attractive.
So you could definitely, I think you're proposing to prohibit the flags and the blade sides or feather signs, um, as they're called, um, you can definitely do that, you could definitely treat the, what I call the snipe sign differently than an A frame sign, um, and require that the A frame sign has to come in and out every night. Like, it can't be out twenty-four seven.
And then we could work the bugs out of the properties that are hard to comply with, or whatever, on a separate issue. Cause there's a good stretch on Dixie that they're fif, that they're fifty fifty that could comply.
What are you gonna do about, like, American flags, cause you gotta, like, you know, they're, um, doing donations where they'll come in and put a flag.
Yeah, so, part of what I didn't put in here yet is, you know, allowing government or state sponsored, I've heard, I've read in previous ordinances, that those are exempt, like.
And those are only up for like, three, four days, you know, for six times a year.
We don't wanna regulate those at all. You don't wanna go anywhere near them.
American flags should probably be exempt.
If, if it's an American flag, then that's, that's gonna be okay, but if, if they put up other signage, then that's not okay.
Yeah, so any state sponsored, you know, like, state of Michigan flag or something, you know.
State or federal flag.
Not a Chevy flag, or a.
But, you know, Trump got really smart with putting, buying people flying flags, so they fly them. But we don't touch flags on flagpoles, that's just, you're asking.
You're opening a can of worms.
Still have to get a permit for the flagpole, right? No, there's no permit for a flagpole, even if it's like right next to an electrical line or something, seems like. Seems like it had to be a certain distance away from electrical line or something like that.
So anyway, this was just the first cut at this, and, uh, we'll, we'll bring it back next time with some more, you know, precision.
Who knows, this is a hard one, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we have kind of a list of things that are just really difficult to enforce. And, you know, what we, what we're trying to avoid is, is we don't wanna overregulate things, but at the same time, um, if we get challenged by, you know, Joe's stump grinder, we wanna make sure we're prepared, you know, to defend it. And, um, so that's what we're trying to do.
I had, I had a thought, and I said, Joe, um, if we're gonna go through a sign amendments ordinance, there were some things I had in mind, and as long as we're doing it, should we add some things to it?
What?
Yeah, what?
Well, I can give you some examples, directional signs, we don't regulate them, we don't, the way I read the ordinance, we don't limit the number they can put. Seems like we should.
I don't think we can, New York.
Yeah, cause actually, the, that Supreme Court say, case about, um. Was directional signs.
We used to have more enforcement out of those, where you couldn't allow logos, and now, we can't stop that.
Okay. Uh, wall signs, uh, the fact that we can grant up to three, I, I think it's too discretionary. I think we should put some guidelines around that or something, maybe some conditions and, you know.
That used to be a special land use, uh, so.
Like I said, we got Meyer right across the street here, is, we, we granted three wall signs, but then they put up the fresh, whatever.
That was a P U D that we basically grant, the board approved, and the planning commission basically approved their sign package.
Yeah, that was, that was massive. So how do we, let's talk about that.
Well, and that's a P U D, so it's a separate circumstance where you guys can regulate.
We told them they were only gonna get three wall signs, but they ended up being a, you know, a dozen, because you got all those little ones on top of that, so.
But, it's a P U D, but if you've got an ordinance that puts a restriction on it, then that. That sends a message.
Yeah, but the planning commission just waived all, waived them.
How could we waive it, though? The ordinance says you have the right to put one sign, and the planning commission can, can, uh, uh, grant up to three, right? Now, if we, if we can just waive it, then why don't we grant up to five or twenty-five?
Well, because in a P U D, you have that discretion, it's different than, you know, a Chase Bank wanting three signs.
So how did they get away with it being, all those signs are supposed to be an accumulation of what's allowed across the frontage? How did it get to be so? How did it get to be so massive?
Yeah, and I, I'll have to go back and look at the calculation of how we did that. Uh, cause I remember Dick broke everything down and based on the four sides, it was still, there was a, there was a some kinda.
Very generous mathematical equation.
It was, it was a, uh, it was a mathematical determination, I think proportionally that came to be.
See, Jason, to answer your question, the PUD gives the planning commission the authority to basically vary from any ordinance. But the offset for that is that variation or that impact of that variation has to be offset by something else. So, I mean, maybe I'm simplifying it, but that's essentially what it says. So in my mind, the looser you make the ability in the ordinance to vary from that ordinance, you can interpret that to mean that the impact of that variance is less, therefore necessitating less mitigation. So, so the stronger you make the ordinance, the more.
Well, we wanna stay close to it.
Well, yeah, I mean, ju- in the past, like Art and Jakes and places like that that have asked for three, they've been granted three, but the planning commission made that in their motion that they still cannot exceed the max of what they would have been allowed.
Okay, that's reasonable.
Yeah, and like Gen- uh, Genesis Credit Union, they had, they wanted multiple signs. Planning commission granted that. They actually went to the ZBA and the ZBA made them ma- make them smaller to conform. So, um, so the ZBA is usually dealing with those three wall signs, cause you, you need more area typically for the three wall signs. But the planning commission in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Has been ratcheting that down and say, hey, we'll give you three, but, you know.
It'd be nice to get the ZBA out of that. Is there any way to make it where the ZBA can't override that? They do some, been doing some crazy stuff lately.
What about this week? Or this next meeting?
I can't comment on that.
That's, I gotta get that done. I was out of town.
Um, but I think by motion, you guys have been ratcheting that down and that's, that's been working. So, cause then the ZBA is out of it.
Right.
I mean, I suppose they can always apply, but they're gonna get the copy of the minutes from you that says.
Well, the ZBA sticks to what they're supposed to stick to, which is dimensional variances and not marketing. They won't be anybody getting granted variances on signs. When they waiver away from the objectives, that's when you get in trouble. You know, there, there's no hardship for marketing. That's, that's where the arguments come from is, is who interprets.
And that's, that's one of the signs. You still have the wall sign or the front. Sign, I mean, so everybody's like, oh, well, I need it up high, so I can see it. I go, you, well, it is up high on the front of your building.
Well, and there's, there's probably been fifteen cases at least over the years where the, it's been the three signs. But the planning commission has granted it whether it was originally under special use or it was, you know, done as part of the conditions of approval that they go and, uh, to the ZBA. And the ZBA either grants them or makes them shrink them to where it's almost barely a variance, so.
They should just stay out of it. Stick to co- stick to dimensional variances like they're supposed to, not marketing, but.
Dimensional variance to be the side of the, of the sign.
I mean, property variances. I don't even, I, I've always said from day one on the planning commission for twenty years, they got no business being involved in planning and signage, in my opinion, the ZBA, because there is no such hardship, really, but that's just my opinion. The, I do though, on this topic of Myers, that's the next thing of how do we, we talked about, talking about how to control the fact that we probably out of lack of vision seeing the finished product, those huge light-up signs that face right into the residential homes on the back of the building, which are, you know, one of those, they gotta be ten-foot letters.
Yeah, we're gonna talk to the store director now that they have one.
Right, but how do we do that in the future to say, um, two different things, I think, that we've talked about recently? Is how do we control sign, especially illuminated signs adjacent to residential that, when the business is closed, not being illuminated? And how do we affect parking lots, you know, the, the amount of parking lot si- uh, light adjacent to residential when the business is closed? So like safe, like I've got some ideas like after business hours, the parking lot lighting needs to be, you know, fifty percent of the parking lot lighting needs to be shut down when the business is in operation, but leave it safe in the parking lot. You know what I mean? And signs that are, uh, that, uh, signs that face residential should be turned off when the business is closed in the evening, you know, those types of protections.
So, a couple of things, to go back and answer Cher Scarborough's question on the three wall signs. You could have it go back to be a special name use, that's a higher standard and there are standards with it. Um, you could write standards in to base that decision. Um, or you could leave it as is and just as a matter of policy kind of tighten it up. To answer your question, planning commissioner Morocco, um, Oxford Township, one of your neighbors, um, they have requirements for parking lot, all parking lot, um, lights to be dimmed to a certain percentage. I can't recall it off the top of my head, um, after eleven o'clock. Um, or after the store closes, there's a, there's a escape valve for, um, security for certain uses. Um, like car dealerships would never want you to dim the lights. Um, so that, those are options to look at. I think also in your signs, you could look at if illumini- an illuminated sign faces a residential use or a residential zoning district that it has to be turned off after the business is closed.
And we could do that in the sign illumination standards, which we never had before twenty-twenty.
So illumination standards? So is that something we can put on the list of things that we're talking about?
Sign in the back, the white sign, to me, that's giving off of, you know, to me, that's, you know, brighter than what our standard is, anyway. We wouldn't, we wouldn't allow a, uh, a regular light to be shining out like that.
It's like a wall packet so big.
Designed for the highway.
It's designed for the highway.
I mean, advertising to the three houses that are sitting facing that, they're just getting a suntan, right?
Well, and if you have three sixty buildings, so, and especially if you require parking in the side or the back, um, you will likely have a request for some sort of sign over their entrance from that parking area that would be illuminated, so that's a good thing to have and maybe that's also something to look at. If you have a rear parking lot, you allow them a smaller sign that's over an entrance, if they have a rear entrance for the public.
That one's just to get people on the off-ramp and stuff to see it. It's not for anybody in the parking lot. You already passed two just like it to get to the parking lot.
Of the buildings actually that are in phase three, um, that, that are, would be next door to the Myers. They'll have signage on the back.
Yeah, facing their parking lot, right.
Facing their parking lot.
And the residential behind it, which are two-story, which is a problem, cause the fences are only one-story, so that's kind of our.
Yeah.
The challenge.
The, the concern to, so we could regu- the, the tur- the timing seems to be our best mechanism, at least now, to protect what's already been done. You know, how often it can be on.
Joe? Uh, there's now six instead of three on these, uh, the beginning of this list here, but we've taken care of a, a number of them. But Sam, this was yours, this flashing changing LED signs along main roads or something. I might have changed the wording.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, we were just talking about.
Yeah, so that, that's been handled. The address parking lot, landing.
That was all across the street. Like open signs, any, any little sign that could.
Okay, thi- this, this, I just threw this in, I think it was last night, this de- this benefits as used in determining factor in approving or not approving pugs and things like that. You know, it's not defined, as a matter of fact, that you brought that up, Bill, it's, it's, it's a a benefit to the township is not defined at all and yet we're supposed to make a determination as to approve or not approve a pub based on a, based on a benefit that we can't even, you know, nail down and it was like that.
We talked about that a couple of meetings ago though, too, about having, that's, it should be part of the checklist. If you got a PU- PUD, you know, these things you gotta meet. It's like, we talked about, it's like, you have to say, you know, instead of just putting out a design and have us search around to see if there's some amenity on there, it needs to be listed. These are my, these are my amenities to help offset, you know.
Yeah, but even what if we don't like the amenities, like they, they. This car wash right here by Kroger, the amenity was gonna be a park in that vacant spot. That nobody wanted the park, the parking rec department didn't want the park.
But there again, if, if they're listening, then now it's like there, like, hey, you can just say that doesn't, we don't, we don't want that amenity.
Same with the red barn. When the red barn, the only reason they would apply, they would, in my opinion, the only reason they would be approved for a PUD is if we wanted the alignment of Big Lake Road. Otherwise, there is not enough of an amenity to justify a PUD. I feel the same way with that car wash. If we don't think we wanna park, then they have to come up with something else that's valuable enough that we think it justifies washing our zoning and all our ordinances away and negotiating their project. And, and we ha- in my opinion, we haven't been getting enough amenities to justify the PUD. That's how you get more stuff, is you say, you still don't qualify for a PUD. You haven't given us enough amenity and just.
Do we have sound footing to say that? I mean, I agree.
We can decide whatever we want.
Yes, we just, we, we.
Because it's a con- it's a discretionary decision and the planning, the, the planning commission recommends, the township board decides whether the deal is worth it.
Discretionary but not arbitrary. I guess we're looking at, it's not, it's not like, well, well, this guy had this much and I had this, it's, it's. We're the ones that measure the value.
We're doing them a favor by allowing them to do something where it's not allowed and, and in return, they need to give us something significant, which has been the problem. We haven't been getting enough, so if you go to Stone, uh, Parks of Stoneworks, just real quick, we had playgrounds the kids put in, they, you know, they, they did parks, they, or you don't get the PUD, you know? And the problem with the project, one of the problems I, issues I have with the project across the street is I want that to be something to change in the PUD ordinance to say that the amenity that's given has to be in perpetuity of the project and that didn't happen across the street. For the first time in the history of the township since I've been involved, the amenity was the patio at the Myers to hold community events was the big amenity, cause we didn't get a park, you know? But that's, was put on the backs of the retailer who could or could not stay in business. That's what I, you know, that was one of my biggest issues, is that if you're gonna say, hey, we're gonna give you this amenity, we want you to make it a PUD, it has to be a, an amenity that runs with the property forever, not something that could come and could go. What if Myers goes belly up? Now what's the amenity that they gave us for the PUD?
I would ask Brian that question. Does that requirement go with the land?
Yeah, it's in the, it's. It's a contract of the land.
If the building stays in business.
Any owner of that building, even if it's vacant, is obligated to maintain that open space.
Yeah, because all of that patio, they're not gonna rip it off. And if they did, they'd be coming right in front of you and the board to amend the PUD.
I mean, Sam's point's good. If it, if it's a vacant building, the chances are less that the owner's not gonna maintain it. You can't argue with that.
They're not gonna.
They're obligated.
They're not gonna hold, uh, we're not gonna get them to hold food truck rallies and events in a vacant abandoned retail store. So that's, that's why I think that layer of protection isn't defined. That whatever, whatever we agree to as the amenity, it needs to somehow, um, along with being under the, which goes with the same ownership thing. When, you know, the, whoever's running the PUD would run the park, would run the playground, would run the pool, would ru- whatever they're giving us. If you put it on one particular retailer, we're vulnerable that that could go askew and that amenity is for those fi- five hundred homes there, or, you know, whatever many hundred homes are ours for their benefit. And if it goes away, it, you know, so I don't know how you'd, it wa- it was a new thing. We hadn't done it before in anything that I was involved with where we kind of made it someone else, um, other than the HOA or some, you know, somebody to provide that. Uh, or it was a permanent amenity that would just never change, like open space or.
The PUD review committee, we've already reviewed four projects, we're in the process of reviewing, another two, we're gonna review a total of seven. And we've already seen some examples where we're really questioning the value of the so-called benefit. And I'm, I'm pretty confident that the end result of that committee will be some amm- amendment recommendations. And.
Like minimums or something or?
Some examples, like a framework. So that we, you know, folks, we're not gonna be here forever, so the next set of people here, they could go sideways compared to what, you know, we just spent ten years moving in this direction and the next set of commissioners might go the other direction. And so we wanna try to make something permanent and it's easier to do that if you list examples so people can follow.
I mean, it, it could be that, it could be the approval process, it could be a lot of different things that we'll recommend. I don't know yet. But I think that's the time to discuss all this other stuff. You, you guys are bringing up.
Well, can I talk about another ordinance that I think we need to look at?
Are we still on signs?
Can you hold off on the rest of yours and let's get through, let's go back to signs?
Think you was on signs?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, cause I, I had a few other things I wanted to consider adding. Um, I'd like to have something to prevent us with the guys at the car wash tried to do. Cause I've run into that before, where you put up some kind of a decorative thing and you try and call it part of the building.
That's what I hate. I had the same point.
We had, we had a, a pet supply store that wanted to paint the whole front of their building above the door stripes of three different corporate colors and then put their names, I don't remember which store it was, right in the middle of it. And we said no, because that's your branding, it's too big. They fortunately didn't challenge it. We were on pretty loose words, language and, and to me, that's the same thing these guys tried to do. They tried to put up something that's branding and not call it a sign. And I'd, and we'll run into it again.
That's really slippery.
Yeah.
Well. If I may, if I may, don't talk about it now, think about it. And if, if you tell us it's hard to do, I'll respect your opinion, but.
But they expect to have the design standard for the building, though, cause if it's not part of the sign, then it's gotta be part of the design criteria, so.
How do you define a sign, right? Is it the?
It's been a slippery slope for a long, long time. You remember Family Video with their oblasts? That's not a sign, you know, they ran a rain gutter to it, so it's like part of the building.
But I'm just saying it's being, um, br- you know, brand, you could just, you know, you can talk about branding when they come in and say they wanna do that. It's like, hey, that's, that's part of your, your sign element, so, so if you're gonna have that, it's gotta be within this, this mo- this size. And that's really what we're telling about the blue panel. It's like, it could, it could be, you could put it as a back into your sign, but the outside edges of that is.
I saw the pictures. It's a recognizable image that they use on Elder Building. Really didn't go with that one. Meeting, but I'm glad you guys looked that way, like it's, it, it is absolutely, uh, an implied sign. It's what they're, it's like, like a big M in front of your restaurant. People are probably gonna think it's a McDonald's.
So, Megan, just think about that. Joe, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to get through the six on the top, cause they're the high priority ones. And this was something that Brian added, uh, PA three thirty, the utility scale renewable energy. I'm not sure where you were going with that.
Well, that was something that, um, we, Carlisle Wartman had prepared a memo and, uh, back last fall, I think it was. And, um, I think it's something we ought to think about this year is, we may wanna, we may have a battery regenerate, I mean, we have power lines. We may have a battery regeneration system installed here and do we wanna have regulations to fight it or just let the state handle it? You know, so I think we need to have a more serious conversation about that. Well, yeah, I don't think we'll ever get a solar farm here, but, you know, the thing is, is that solar farms can. Well, yeah, I don't think we'll ever get a solar farm here, but, you know, the thing is, is that solar farms can, can go over multiple municipal boundaries though. So, if somebody has, they may go forty acres into our township, but it's, you know, it's a hundred and forty of it are in Brandon. We don't, or Groveland, but.
Yeah.
So I think we, we need to have a more serious conversation about it, uh, because we kinda gave up. You know, I know we gave, uh, gave you guys the memo, but it's like, whoa, this is a lot going on here.
Would it be part of a solar ordinance?
Well, it's really all three renewable energy types, so wind, solar, and battery storage, and. Um, you're much more likely to get something like battery storage than wind and solar just based on acreage. Um, and the Michigan Public Services Commission has started taking petitions. Under that state law, so if, if you don't have anything in place, automatically something could go to the, they would approach you. You'd have a certain number of days to put something together, and then if the developer felt like it didn't need the state law, they could go to the Michigan Public Services Commission. What you're missing out on too is that there's some money associated with it. It's not a ton of money, but there is some money or in that. They need to give some benefits back to the, to the municipality.
Are there other communities doing it?
So Oxford passed one, um, last year, theirs is. Yeah, Orient did, and then, um, Brandon did as well, so, um, I'm not familiar with Orient's. Oxford, they only allowed these uses in their gravel zoning overlay, um.
Should probably be like our industrial zoning or something?
Well, their gravel zoning overlay, if you look at their map, it's huge. Yeah, yeah, it, it takes over like a third of the township, um, and then. In Brandon, what they did was they just merely said, we'll allow them, but it's under the Michigan Public. If it's at that scale that is regulated by the state, it goes to them. Um, so that's how they decided to handle it.
Goes to them.
It, it goes to the M P S C. So, cause there's a certain scale or size.
So is that, can we have a separate solar ordinance that's different from what you're talking about? Cause that's, I, that's the other one that I wanted to bring up while we're talking solar, because we've already got people putting panels up. To power their signs at the road, and what we don't have is something to regulate how many solar panels can be placed along the. Road right away to power up your signs or what you're doing, and now that Comerica's done it. It's kinda like, okay, now you can see what it could turn into. So how are we, how do we regulate something like that to make sure that they're, you know, if you're gonna use solar panels, they're. Uh, they're like a swimming pool where they're supposed to be behind the, you know, sideline view of the building, or they have to be on the roof or they can't be viewable from the street. Or, I don't have a problem with them putting them on the roof of a bank, let's say, just using Comerica as an example, cause they probably put it up because we don't have an ordinance, so we didn't. Regulate it, but they got a pretty unsightly good, you know, decent size, three, four panel setup. Sitting in the middle of the building in the front yard to power, I'm assuming it's to power up their sign, it's not they're gonna have to do anything else.
They put that in there and they had a grant for it, that's why they did it, but we had nothing to stop it.
Right, but what if you got a six foot high sign or one that we've granted a variance for, like the medical building by, you know, by, uh. Across from the car wash on Dixie, and all of a sudden, their architectural feature is a solar panel. You know, on top of it, like, we're, you know, it's coming, so.
Well, now that you do, reflection off them and everything else too.
So then what you do is you regulate that, 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 that's not on the scale that the state regulates.
Right.
So you would regulate that as an accessory structure, um, and you could have a section in general provisions that's specifically about that. And you can make it different for commercial, residential, if it's on signs. I've seen solar, small solar panels on top of, um. Parking lot lights, um, they're.
Speed limit signs.
Right, so, well, that and, we're getting into the weeds, but that in particular, you wouldn't be able to touch because that's.
An advisory sign.
Yeah, an advisory sign, and, but you could have regulations ar- around those.
You guys feel that's something we should at least. Get something set up before it gets a little out of control?
Cause we, we, any solar panels for somebody's house that they put arrays out, like on the north end of the township. We've treated them just like an accessory structure, uh, in terms of setbacks.
Even throughout the house, even if they're on the.
No, no.
Just to throw a ray on.
Yeah, if somebody does a big one out in their backyard.
Interesting.
And then.
We've had maybe.
But how about we tie that into the design standards of all of our corridors? That they, solar, solar can't be, you know, at, can't be visible from the road or has to be on the roof or something like that is a quick fix to that.
Yeah, just stop it from being on the front, you know?
Typically what you do for, I don't know whether you would do it, I think it might be overly complicated to put in the overlays, I would just make it apply to all. Commercial buildings or non-residential buildings that.
Solar's gotta be on the roof.
Solar's gotta be on the roof and it can't be more than X amount of feet.
Like a parapet wall or something?
Yeah.
Or can't exceed the maximum mean height of the building as if it's taken into place or not?
Um, usually what they do is it's not more than two feet.
Is that, can we add that to the list, uh, things to look at, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, I.
You guys okay with that?
Do we have any arrays like that for residences in, like the northwestern part of the townships? They may have like arrays on a bridge where they've. Got like a little mini farm for solar, I'm just curious.
No, I mean, the most we've seen is ones that are about eighty feet long.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a guy in Strawberry Land that did that, there's a guy over on the east side of the township in the big lots that did it.
Okay, we don't have somebody like, um, ten or, you know, more acres out of Reese or something, that's.
No, it's really hard now because you can't backfill the, the grit like you used to.
Right, yeah.
So it's, they've basically limited, you're never gonna.
You can't sell them that.
No.
Okay.
Even if, the only thing that personally I would think of that could get, be vulnerable for a solar takeover would be the school property. And we wouldn't be able to control that, would we? Anyway.
But to me, that's part of the open space, we should buy that property, or at least get some kind of amendment to be first, or refuse it. So it can't go to somebody else.
There's so much open space out.
Joe, you have more?
To secure the, for, for first refusal.
Yeah, uh, the high priority ones, we've talked about all of them, the solar panels, I forgot to put it on here, I, I got it. But develop guidelines for Dixie Highway Corridor, I mean, we talked about that already.
Yeah.
Review up that access management guidelines, that's for Brian, I don't know where he was going with that. We did talk about reviewing and updating landscape and buffering requirements without coming up with numbers. Um, but it's on the list of things to be considered. Uh, going down the, the same page, tree preservation, we got that under control, I think.
I did.
Um, encourage all housing options, reserve all demographic sectors of the community, well, I don't know how we do that. Uh, you know, I'm down at the bottom, Sam.
Yeah.
Um. Encourage all, I mean, how do, how, how do you do that?
We mean making it, well, you could make it, uh, the special land use in, in all the districts we want it to be or something, so that, that the housing's an option. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I just, it says, you know, encourage, you know, in my discussions with different people, I, you know, I got these, these topics. One of them was encourage all housing options which serve all demographic sectors of the community. You know, seniors, the young people.
Was it in a master plan or something?
It was in the master plan.
The master plan is there now.
Yeah, I don't think we have. I don't think we have affordable or low income housing listed, and there's mainly, uh, uh.
It's not equitable now, but the county pushes that.
Trying to, yeah, the county's trying to push it.
Well, I was gonna say that.
Let them subsidize it.
Well, I'm just saying, we don't even list like, you know, like Bridgewater, we don't really list any other areas like, hey, if you're gonna put another Bridgewater, put it here or anything like that.
We're pretty, getting pretty built out.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, in, in the master plan, it doesn't really talk about low income housing or affordable housing.
No.
But I think that's, you know, we've done that over the years, and that's, we got Bridgewater.
Well, we got, uh, I think we've done, we've got quite a few more modestly, uh, affordable housing developments than what we were doing.
Well, that's what I'd say, over the last several years or two, we've had, uh, two or three different, uh, re- places for rental where we never had.
Before.
Very much rental before, so, so like Man Road and Manville.
So are we just saying that that's not something that we need to be concerned about?
Hey, put that on real low priority.
Okay, okay, moving very long then.
The burger behind the back.
Site plan approvals, we've talked about that.
I, I don't know what you're talking about there.
Neither do I. That's what I put, where is the concern? I, I'm not sure where I got this from, identifying and eliminating inconsistencies and then to tighten up provisions. To prevent wild development, that's wild, it's not will. Uh, see notes from PUD subcommittees. Uh, uh, going back to our subcommittee meetings, you know, but I don't think that we had any particular concerns that we identified. At least with my notes.
What are you working on now?
Yeah, yeah, not, yes, okay, yeah, I mean, then the general court ordinance is on the other sheet. Property Maintenance Code, long-term rental ordinance, short-term rental ordinance, we're dealing with those. Uh, strategy for promoting redevelopment along Dixie Highway, that's probably not on, it shouldn't be on this list anymore, we've.
Should be the D D A.
Yeah, we're on that.
So, but I mean, it was a concern, so.
Property Maintenance Code will go to the township board and two, two meetings.
Rental ordinance.
Okay, for the long terms?
No, it's gonna be just.
Oh, for the buildings that are dilapidated and decaying.
Start with Property Maintenance Code, we're still, I think Dave's still working on the kinks on the, the long term.
Just to jump back, uh, Joe, and you're in the middle, uh, three items you had, you were says review access management, I think it was. Bills, that's supposed to be cross-access or?
Uh, I think it encompasses, uh, that and probably other stuff.
Yeah.
It's a more broad, yeah.
I don't know that we're looking at that at the moment, or anyone's working on it or.
Well, I, I think we'll tackle a piece of that in the Dixie overlay.
Okay. Well, this is the list, I, again, it was just, these were just talking points, I didn't really do any. Putting any meat to any of these or any solutions to them, just to get about there to talk about.
That's a question.
I guess we've done that.
Brian, so what's, so the general code of ordinances, which, uh, uh, Steve and, and. David and you are working on those types of things. Now, that's different than the, um.
The zoning related.
Regular ordinance amendments?
Yeah, so the general code ordinances, it goes straight to the board, um, and they, you know, the board will make the decision on those.
And what is the difference between the two?
Well, they're, they're not in the zoning ordinance, so they don't require a public hearing at the zoning level.
So is one more like, um, monitoring and regulation and the other one's more like, uh, like what people can do? And the other one's more like, uh, what we can do to protect people type of?
It's similar, it's like a, it's like a regulatory, sometimes it's called a regulatory ordinance, um.
That's the, uh, general code is more the regulatory?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and with long-term rent, you know, we brought short-term rentals here and that, you know, didn't go anywhere. So, but we're still gonna build a component into, it's gonna be a s- a subset of long-term.
Which is really important.
And, and really, it's a, yeah, I mean, that, that's a big problem that we don't have a rental ordinance.
We have fourteen hundred apartments and we haven't been in any of them in thirty years.
Yeah, and that's a huge liability.
And just the other day, I called Dave and I'm like, hey, did they pull a permit to tear this ten thousand square foot roof off this apartment building? And they're like, no. Yeah, it's like, well, that's a problem.
Well, and like Hidden Lakes replaced all their furnaces.
Right, I mean, these buildings are fifty years old and we've not, we, they're not pulling permits to work on them or do anything, and then one just burned to the ground two years ago. Like, uh, that's a concern, you know?
Yeah, so it's, it's more of a certification process, you know, for these rentals. You can't stop them, but you can certainly. Get in them every couple of years and certify them.
I think we're responsible to make sure that the rentals are safe for the people who rent them in our community, and that's why, that was the only thing I cared more about with the short term. Was that if you're profiting from people, they should be safe places and, you know, I mean, if you're not making sure there's. C O two detectors and fire extinguishers, you know, they should, nobody should be complaining, they're doing it for profit. You know, that's a lot different than, you know, when you're making money, you gotta, you gotta make sure your stuff's legit.
It's commercial, it's commercial.
That's how I look at it. And it's just the safety of, uh, the residents.
Joe, you done?
Yeah, what I will do is just maybe write a sentence or so for each point as to what we decided and what, where we're going with it.
Report specifically.
Yeah, something like that.
Um, not to beat a dead horse, but going back to the sign, I, sign ordinance, I did have a couple other ideas and we don't need to discuss these in detail, but. Um, I like the idea of a comprehensive sign plan for multi-tenant buildings. I, I know our ordinance calls for it, but. What I have in mind is something a little more broader than that, uh, where you would, like, shopping centers would be required to have a. Coordinated sign plan, uh, with size, location, color, and character for their entire, um, shopping center. And then, um, as tenants come in, uh, they would come in and just get a permit for their sign as long as it met. With the sign plan.
For the monument sign you're talking about?
No, uh, wall signs for each tenant. Well, the cour- the, the comprehensive sign plan would be everything, but for each.
For multi-tenant bills, we definitely need to come up with something because, uh, one, one, uh, business has a gigantic sign, next business got a little sign.
Yeah.
And they, they should all, you know, have to meet some criteria for maximum size per tenant or something.
And they don't, they don't know?
We had a major fail here just in the last couple of weeks for the Sisters Cafe. That sign has gotta be bigger than, uh, is even allowed totally. And, and there's three signs in the building now.
And that's a big sign.
Yeah, that's no way that, that thing should be that big, so. Not, not if the three signs are, cause there's, there's a sign on the north and the south side, or the east and west side if you wanted, then the south side. The three of those have got to, uh, uh, exceed the hundred square feet.
We didn't, we only permitted the one, there's others?
There's two, there's, well, the other two, the other two are.
The one, the other ones were existing.
There, yeah, they were there. So like you say, there's no way she should've got a full-size sign, uh, with the other two there. That should, those other two should've been factored in and taken away from the max she could've, could've done. When I say she is.
You're assuming, you're assuming it's a woman?
Why, I.
Ron.
Sisters, sisters. The sisters violated theirs.
Then, on the ground signs, we allow a second ground sign if it's on a secondary road, I, I wonder if we should, um. You know, if it's a small building and it's on a corner, do we really need to allow two of them? You know, should it had, should also, should the size of the building come into play in making that decision as to whether they get.
Or the property size.
I think we wrote that in, Sam may remember when Regency Center came up. Cause they have an entrance on Maybe and Sachibah, pretty sure.
But do we make it guaranteed for everybody? Cause I mean, Neiman's Market's got multiple ones too.
I don't, I read it and I haven't seen it.
Is it special land use to get a second monument sign or it could be?
Well, I, I mean, it could be a variance, but, I mean, or, you know, if somebody wanted one, but, um, with.
Bowman's, Bowman's got a couple.
Well, they're all different parcels, and, uh, that was a planning commission decision.
One piece of property.
Yeah, that was a planning commission thing.
So there is a vehicle that we could use to allow for that, is that what you're saying?
Well, it does allow for it, that's.
So we make it where, uh, more than one monument sign on a parcel needs special land use, or being as up? Or did they automatically get two if it's two different, uh, if it's two different exits?
Well, I think they, according to the ordinance, they get two, but I don't think of, I can't think of many applications where that's actually happened.
Yeah. Yeah, the way I read it, if there are.
It's more like subdivision.
Two roads, they get two signs.
Yeah, and I, I, I think of, where we've seen it is subdivisions, where you have two different entrances.
I mean, C V S doesn't have it, Rite Aid didn't have any ground signs, you know, but might, what comes there might want them. Um, the seven eleven doesn't have two, you know, the plazas that are on corners, most of them just have.
The one.
One.
Oh, okay.
I think for Rite Aid, I think you're wrong on that.
Rite Aid, did they have a monument sign? I didn't think they did.
Their name's on the one in the middle in the front of.
Yeah, you allow three wall signs on that one.
Wait, are you talking about the one up here or the one over on M fifteen?
Uh no, I was talking about the one in uh Dixie and uh.
Oh, I was talking about Sachibon Sarkston.
M fifteen.
About allowing uh requiring landscaping around the base of mine ground signs. I've seen it done, I think it really dresses them up.
Well, you're gonna make it taller then, cause they're gonna wanna have a. Because when they want them eight feet in the air, they pile two foot of dirt around the bottom of it.
Well, there's ways to work around that.
Yeah, but that's what they do though.
Well, then that's part of the ordinance, you can't build it up.
I understand it, but then when you start saying I want bushes around it, now the visible sign's gonna be higher.
That's what happened to the Sisters uh sign, their their uh monument sign out there, had nice bushes, flowers around it. They got rid of all that so they could see the sign better, they repainted the sign.
Which one looked better?
So, you know, the whole berm thing is, if you know, I think if you're gonna fix it, you've gotta be six foot above. Uh grade within twenty-five feet away or something, so you stop the ten-foot sign with a four-foot pile of dirt around it, you know?
Well, yeah, there is a radius that they have to meet for that, to prevent, you know, you just building up a big pile of dirt.
Well, there's people that put like a little, because the ground's uneven, so they'll put like a little base in there, which, you know, the basins that be in this big and then the.
Does that, do you think we're covered on those, or is it kinda sloppy, a little loose, let's say, loose?
Well, I think, I think we're, we're pretty good on ground signs and wall signs at this point. Um I'm not running, you know, and I review them all, I'm not running into any issues with reviewing these and kicking them back to people. Biggest problem is nobody knows how to read an ordinance as a sign company, you know, and that's what we run into. And it's constant back and forth with guys, cause they're trying to get every square inch. We actually lowered the tolerance on wall signs from um certain districts. Like C two allowed two square feet per foot of lineal tenant space or frontage, now everything's one.
One.
And so you can see that like in White Lake Commons where, which is C two, where the original businesses have much bigger signs than the ones that have come in after.
Like a one to three ratio, is that what you're talking about?
What's that?
The ratio?
It's, it's just a calculation of area, so for every foot of tenant space frontage, like if you have twenty feet of frontage.
Yeah.
Uh as your tenant space, you get twenty square foot of sign.
Yeah, so hundred-foot wide building gets a hundred square foot of signage, however you wanna give it up.
Yeah, and and then it's, everything's measured from the outermost dimensions. So, you know, a big Kroger, you know, with certain letters that are bigger than others, that that actually penalizes you. You know, cause we're measuring from the outermost dimensions. So, and it's always been that way in our ordinance.
Except for the car wash.
And then the last thing I had was, do we, I don't, I couldn't find it, do we regulate real estate development signs?
You can't, they're temporary.
Well, we like them to be temporary, but there's been some here since I've lived here.
Is that a result of the Supreme Court ruling?
Yes.
What about for lease signs and shit, stuff, our stuff, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, like uh.
And what on Sachibon here has been up through twenty years, next to McDonald's.
Yeah, and there's, there's been one, the ones at the courthouse property for many years, and it's not even the, he's not even the broker. So, up and down Dixie there in the north end.
In another community, they had expressed concern about those sorts of temporary signs. That really though, if it's associated with something that's being built, um it's a number of years. So we've called them intermediate signs and defined them differently and had different rules for them.
Coming soon.
And that they could only be up for the amount of time that something is being built with them or something like that.
Yeah, so we have, what it says in our ordinance, cause we struggled with this too when we wrote this. Was uh when all, all or portion of a building or land area is listed for lease, maximum display time for freestanding temporary signs. And temporary signs on a building should be ninety days. When a portion of building is leased for sale, the maximum display time uh basically says it's for the duration of building.
But so if they're at full occup, you know, we would know in the township if there are occupancy.
Yeah.
You know, that for lease signs, it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's orange, it's been there, it's been there for a decade, I bet you. That one by the clock tower. That, you're telling me they still haven't leased that building yet? And now we're talking a for-sale sign because of the building's vacant.
It's almost like they keep it up so, see if they can get somebody a bit higher than.
Or or they can direct them to some other property they have that's nearby.
Probably, that's what it is.
Yeah, and it's massive. It's a big sign.
Can you look at any way to tighten that up?
Like, I asked about the real estate signs before, cause they're, you know, they're like eight foot tall.
Yeah.
Be like, hey, well, the sign, there could be a limit on the blight of sign too. How it, when the sign's dangling on one board and it's been there forever.
Ninety days is a three-month period, so it's been there longer than three months. Steve can just go take care of it.
It's a chainsaw.
Well, we've done that before.
Cause that's kind of a, I mean, there's leniency, but come on, you know, now it's blight.
Okay, anybody else got anything? Um approval of last month's minutes, if we're ready to move on to the next item?
Don't have any.
Don't have any?
They weren't ready, everything will be next month.
Megan, you got anything you can add?
No, no sir.
Would um, can we talk about uh having another meeting next month, or are we ready?
Make the twenty-fourth, which is the sec, the would be the.
Of April, you know, like say that's the week of Easter, isn't it, so.
I'm out of town on the twenty-fourth too, but that that doesn't mean we wanna drag our feet for two months. Can we, is there an option, Brian, for other, for this type of?
We can call special meetings.
You know what I mean, this type of meeting.
Well, next in April, we're gonna have one case, that's it.
One?
Yep. So.
On the tenth?
Expect it's gonna be long one?
It's Monarch Grove's final site plan.
Oh, that's not good, we've already done a lot of work with them.
Yep.
Megan, do you think that, is there any chance you would be ready with some, any of this, or Brian with the ordinances and the, for that meeting? That we could chip away at some words, at least reviewing some?
I thought I had a month, I I.
Had a month just a minute ago.
Yeah, I can, I I can def, we can definitely do the memo on um Dixie Highway. And then um can see, can start on and see where we get with the woodlands.
Okay, even if we could get to the.
Procedure part?
Procedure part for uh text review or?
And the.
That's a little less complicated than the other, the whole big, big, big one.
And the rezoning?
We can do some, Frank can read those parcels on Monday and yeah, that can definitely be done.
Okay, well, do your best to, you see that we're excited about moving forward, or at least I am, quickly.
Um are we, so we probably won't, are we gonna have any uh, whatever we're calling it, pre-planning meetings?
Uh, no, nothing new.
Okay.
So.
Oh, so there won't be a pre-one on the tenth?
Uh, no, I I'll, you know, I try, I try to wait till next Thursday, then I'll, if I don't get any by Thursday, I'll cancel it.
Okay.
I'm trying to get people a week ahead, you know.
That's good.
Uh the only thing I have under discussion is um I got from the American Planning Association, a pro-housing webinar series in April. And it's about um housing development and stuff like that. And I, I thought it might help us on maybe figuring out some things on Dixie. And I just wanted to encourage, I I wanted to ask Megan and Brian if they knew anything about these particular, if you've seen them.
Um, yeah, I've been participating in those that are done by Michigan Association of Gaming, there's a series. Um so they've had ones on um public financing and kind of like how people do. The complications of the the stack of financing that goes into affordable housing developments. Um they've had in general, like different policies and so now they're, they, it's really kind of the. The nitty-gritty of affordable housing development. And then also then how you can, you as a community can either utilize programs, change your zoning or whatnot. So that you have a diversity of housing types. Um but also there are some things that are some uh simple, but yet very controversial, usually like. Um reducing the number of parking spaces required for a multiple family dwelling.
Yeah.
So, it, they're, they're good and I would encourage folks to go if you're interested.
Can I ask a question, does affordable housing is not synonymous with subsidized, is it?
Are they trying to change terms?
No, so um but a lot of times in the current market with the cost of trades. And with the cost of materials, um to make the price point so something is affordable for somebody making. An affordable, a lot of times is defined or attainable as anywhere between the average median income for the county. Of anywhere between sixty to a hundred percent or a hundred and ten percent. Um which I think Oakland County's average salary, average.
Here we're like over eighty.
Is eighty, so, but if you think of like somebody who is a college graduate. Um they are likely not making eighty thousand dollars a year, so where can they find housing? Um and then also, so it it gets into a lot of those. So affordable housing is not necessarily um subsidized housing or people who are very low income. Or a lot of people will refer to it as section eight, and those necessarily don't fall underneath those programs.
Okay.
Um this is, uh and a lot of the series is targeted at, again, that sixty to a hundred and twenty percent. Of area median income on a county basis and looking to see whether people who can afford a dwelling. Paying one-third of their salary. And if you want us to do a little math and show you how we've done it, calculated it for other communities, we can, but looking at your zoning ordinance, looking at what you have. You do have a diversity of housing types, you are not a community that only allows single-family housing. You have done a great job of, of through mainly your PUDs. Of having a diversity of housing types, um and then also looking for affordable. Creating housing for seniors and you know that you have that need. Um it's just in the current market and environment, it, the price per square foot.
Not possible.
Really expensive, so to hit those price points for young families, for seniors on a limited income. Um for, you're starting teachers, you're starting firefighters, you're starting police officers. Often, it's really difficult to do without some sort of subsidy.
We can't make the land cheaper.
Right.
And we have over a thousand apart rentals in the community, so you, what's, you know, what, you can't. Get any more dense than an apartment, so you know, I don't see how, I don't see how we regulate. Like we mandate that something gets, you know, is only for apartments when we already have so many. We have rentals all the way up to twenty-five hundred a month, so from, you know, every spectrum, we've allowed for uh. In the township. Mobile homes, I mean, we have a lot of affordable.
Whatever, build new, to build new housing and say you're gonna put affordable housing, you know, you're, you're building. I'm just saying, how, how small a house do you have to, have to be?
Shipping container house.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's pretty hard to even build a house for three hundred thousand, right, so and is that affordable, huh?
Are these tailored to?
Relative, like what's affordable?
Ownership or both?
Both, both, it, it, I would say it's worth your time. Um but I would also say that your community has done a lot of the things that you might hear that is suggested. Other than taking advantage of specific programs where it can bring subsidy in. Like changes they have under Brownfield Redevelopment Act.
Or take some grant money or something from somebody to put up subsidized housing or something. That's what the county, I think, is pushing, so.
Brian, we, we've got money available for things like this, right? Uh anybody interested in attending, let me know, I can send you the flyer if you know.
What's the date?
Um well, it's, it's multiple webinars. Um April twenty-fourth, May twenty-second, June twenty-fifth, July sixteenth, September twenty-fifth.
Addressing housing.
Yeah, so um and if, if in, Brian, if anybody wants to do it, do you want us to just register? Or do you want us to go through you?
Yeah, go ahead and register and then just give me the reimburse, and I'll reimburse you.
Okay, anybody want me to?
So just send me the receipt or whatever.
Yeah, would you please, I think I'm in that already, but I wanna make sure it's the same one. I'm not sure, what was the date in April of the?
Twenty-fourth, I think.
Was one? Yeah, April twenty-fourth, and I, in, in the spirit of, you know, continued training, I'm gonna bring these. To the attention of the commission from time to time and and if you guys see some, please, brace.
Good stuff.
Okay, motion adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor, aye, 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 close, we're done, thanks.